We're going to start in a minute. As I said earlier, since we're not all in the CPR, public comment will be handled in the following way. There's two opportunities for the public to make comment during the meeting, which are reflected on the agenda. When those public comment periods are opened, you can go into the Q and A feature in Zoom, put in your name and address, and I will then call on you and you'll be promoted to be able to speak. The public comment period, just as we do in person, please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Also, given the number of attendees and people who would like to make comments, to the extent your question or comment has been addressed either in whole or at least in part by a prior one, if you can just acknowledge that and not repeat the comment, just so we can allow as many people as possible to provide a comment or question during the time allotted. Also, to the extent you have questions that aren't able to be answered or we don't have time for, you can always send an email to us at board@irvingtonschools.org, and we will respond to your questions. And those responses to the questions are also posted online for the public to view once those responses are sent. So with that, can I get a?
Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. We all stand for the pledge of allegiance. So if I could get a motion to accept tonight's agenda, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Friedman, a second. All in favor? So now, as I was alluding to, we have our first opportunity for comments from the community. So if there's anyone who would like to make a comment at this point in time, please go into the Q and A function, type in your name and address, and you'll be recognized. As I said, there's also an opportunity after Dr. Harrison gives the presentation for community comment. So there'll be the opportunity as well. But now, if there's anyone who has a like to make a comment, please let us know. Della Lenz, 21. Eiler, Jay, if you could please promote her to speak. And again, remember, everyone, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Hi, everyone. I just had a question if there were going to be other opportunities for community discussion. I know with the board meeting and going through. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I didn't know if I was still muted. I started to talk and I was muted. Do you know if there, with the board meeting, you have a lot of agenda items? And I know there's a lot of people on the call. Do you know if there'll be other opportunities like for community discussion and concern and to have questions answered more in a public forum rather than just emails so that we can kind of learn from each other?
Well, obviously, we have the board meeting this evening where the initial recommendations are being presented. There'll be other board meetings that are already scheduled for August where depending on where we are in our planning and process, there'll be further updates and discussion as those plans evolve and become more detailed over time.
Okay, I'm just. For any feedback from the questions being asked, is there a way to communicate with the public? And because we don't want to take up too much time, you know, a lot of people on the call asking questions. It's just a thought. You don't have to answer anything now.
No, thank you for the thought. Obviously, as a board, the only time we can come together and discuss issues is at a public meeting. So, you know, we do have those constraints. But also, I'll just, a housekeeping note. To the extent you have a question or comment, and it's something that can be answered relatively simply, we may do so this evening. Otherwise, if it's more involved, there may be a written response that will be forthcoming just as we do at our usual board meetings when there is the opportunity for community comments. So for those of you who haven't been to our meetings in the past, it's obviously, it's a little different in this Zoom format. But that's the typical protocol, which is you can make comments. Response, we will do so, but it's not to have an extended dialogue back and forth. It's really an opportunity for the community to make comments, to give their reflection and comments that can then be heard by the board and the administration. So next, we have Mike Lieberman at 51 Hillside Terrace.
Hi. Thanks for, let me ask a question. Just wondering, given the fact that between kindergarten and 12th grade, we've got a pretty wide range of students in terms of their ability to effectively distance learn as well as have differing health risks with respect to COVID, I'm just wondering if you guys are considering different plans for the different schools?
So, Brian, quickly. Right now, this evening, we'll present an overview of what our current plan is. We certainly are going to be flexible based upon our experiences and the evolution of any guidance that continues to come forth from the State Education Department and the Department of Health. But tonight, we're going to present our overall recommendation to open school in a safe way and in a manner which will tend to what we believe will meet all students' needs.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Jennifer Littman, 56, Manor Pond Lane.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions. I was able to see the board document this afternoon when it was posted. So I've read the reopening plan. One question that struck me is that, given that some children are going Monday, Tuesday, and other children are going Thursday, Friday, and that most major holidays fall on Mondays, is there going to be a way to ensure that all, that both Cohort A and Cohort B get the same number of in-school days, given the holiday issue? If you want to address that one first, or?
Yeah, we certainly will make accommodations for that, and I will speak to that when we arrive at that place in the agenda, Ms. Littman.
Okay, thanks. And then my other question, which I know I've sort of posed before in other forums, is that I have noticed that there are a number of public school systems in the New York area, including Westchester, including Byram Hills and Armonk and Bronxville, and then some Long Island schools like Sayosset and Roslin that are contemplating full-time in-person for the younger grades, particularly K through sixth. And they're doing that by splitting up the classes between a teacher and an aide and repurposing areas such as cafeterias and gymnasiums and whatnot to prioritize in-person education for the early elementary years. And I notice, as the prior questioner asked, that that there is not a difference of treatment of the different school buildings like Dow's Lane at this point. And I'm wondering if this was rejected. Why is it the case that Irvington doesn't have the capacity to do that at Dow's Lane? Or is there a reason that full-time in-person learning wasn't considered at the Dow's Lane level?
So I believe I can answer this quickly in that each school district has a unique set of circumstances in which they deal. When we think about where we are in Irvington versus any of the districts that you referenced, there's a difference set of challenges and opportunities that may be present. I know that some districts certainly are repurposing the spaces, as you indicated. If you watched our prior presentation, that we actually contracted with a source that went and identified how we could social distance in every single space in our schools and what the maximum number of students we could put in individual classrooms. Using that and meeting with our own staff, we had to identify whether or not we could safely operate schools. Surely, if we look at Dow's Lane, we could find a way that we could put all students socially distanced in the schools, but that would be splitting each class in half and then also looking to have an aide or someone else monitoring the other students while they're not directly with their teachers. But we found that there were numerous safety concerns and that we are having to use numerous public spaces throughout the school building that would have caused challenges with respect to passing in hallways, the ability to maintain a safe environment during an emergency situation. So at this point in time, we're not equipped to be able to deliver that from a physical space with physical constraints before us. However, if there are, there's some lightning of the regulations that are placed on districts, we certainly may have that opportunity to revisit it down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder, I mean, I've said this before, but if you want to make a comment, please put your name and address in the Q and A, and then you'll be recognized to comment. Any comments that are typed into the Q and A are not going to be read. So if you want to make a comment, please put your name and address in the Q and A, and you'll be recognized to speak. Also, apologies if I mispronounce anyone's name. And with that, Joshua Levin, 26 Park Avenue. Jay, if you could please recognize him.
Really quick, Mr. Friedman, I just wanted to acknowledge a bevy of points that this is a question, this isn't a question and answer period. This is public comment prior to the presentation and also after the presentation. It's the standard board format. So for those people who are wondering why we're doing this now.
Okay, good evening, folks. This is Joshua Levin. How are you all? So if I misunderstood, so now is not the time for the question and answers because I actually had a question with regards to contact tracing. Is that not the period of time that I should be asking that now?
The public is free to make comments at this point in time because we have two periods. But obviously, the presentation has not been delivered yet. So after the presentation is given, a lot of your questions may be answered or maybe better at that point in time. But since at the board meetings, we do provide these two opportunities for the public to make comment, we didn't want to forego that. So if there are people who would like to make comments now, they're certainly welcome to do so. You know, we will cap it at some point so that way we can get to the presentation. But be mindful that we haven't done that yet.
I appreciate that. Then I'm content to wait and see if you address my question, and then I don't have to answer it later on, or I'll address it then. Thank you so much.
Perfect. We have Sechin Hardus, 225 Harmon Road.
Hi, good evening. One of the options that I didn't see in your presentation, and again, I'm sorry if this seems like a question, but with parents giving the option of 100% distance, coming from, I know I'm coming from the completely opposite direction here. But is that something that was considered or will be answered later?
I'll address that as well as contract tracing during the presentation. Unless you have a pressing comment or question, I may want to encourage community to wait until we conclude the presentation because it's likely that many of your questions may be addressed during the course of that time. And then, if not, certainly, there would be the opportunity to present them to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, with that, I'll leave this open for another minute to see if there's anyone else who want to make a pre-comment. But what I will say is this presentation tonight is part of a continuum that has been going on since the spring where we've initially reflected on the experiences that we had as a district in emergency remote learning back in the spring. We've had, we had a meeting again about 10 days ago where we talked about the process that we were going through as a district to get to where we are tonight, where Dr. Harrison is going to present his recommendations for what the distance learning plan would be for the start of school. At the same time, this is not the end of the conversation. I'd say this is really maybe halftime as there's still six weeks before school is set to start. And while we're tonight outlining the overarching framework for the district, there's still work being done at each individual schools to finalize the programming within the distance learning model and deal with the specifics of each school. And that work is ongoing. And as I said, there'll be future board meetings where there'll be additional information and discussion of that. So, you know, for those who are tuning in tonight to think that this is the end, it's not. This is a dialogue that will be continuing throughout the summer until we're ready to reopen. And again, where we are today is where we are today based on how things are looking and our understanding of the guidance from the state that obviously may change over the next month or so. So this is unfortunately somewhat of a fluid situation, and I encourage everyone to follow along as our plans progress. And with that, I turn it over to Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. I'll just bear with me one moment. Alrighty. So, good evening, everyone. As Mr. Friedman indicated, this is another step in our process and a critical step, one whereby we are going to outline the recommendation for a hybrid learning model. I do want to remind everybody that the state of New York, from Governor Cuomo to the State Education Department, has directed schools to be able to provide opportunities for onsite learning. So while there are questions about distance learning, whether it be 100% or a hybrid model, we are charged with finding the means to be able to facilitate onsite learning for our students. So tonight, this is a recommendation that will be embedded into a plan that will be submitted to the State Education Department and the Department of Health on Friday. The complete plan, and I've heard reference to this being our plan. I do want to clarify that this is a presentation that is a recommendation of one small component, but probably one of the most critical, one component of a page that is approximately, a document that is approximately 70 pages in length. So tonight, I am going to give an overview of recommendations that we have, and I'm going to provide additional insights into the work that we are doing to prepare for students in September. So that said, all of our work that we've done in the district in preparing for the reopening of school has really sat upon these four guiding principles. And they are focused on what we need to keep in mind with everything that we do. In looking at this slide before you, I think this speaks to all of us, right? We all want to make sure that we are supporting the safety and well-being of our students and all of our staff members in our schools. We want to ensure that there's equity and accessibility to learning for every one of our children. We want to make sure that the instructional delivery meets the learning needs of all of our students. And we want to make sure that we're addressing the social and emotional needs of all students and, again, our employees here in the school district. That said, through this process, there are a number of different models that were under consideration. So when we think about where we are, and I think I tipped my cap on this first one in my communication yesterday, we certainly need to be prepared for 100% onsite learning. And I want to be optimistic and believe that we're going to have that opportunity at some point in this school year. However, we recognize that is not a possibility right now. There's too many concerns for the safety and well-being of our students, and we certainly can't accommodate all the Department of Health requirements. However, we will be ready when the time comes. 100% distance learning is certainly a consideration for us and a plan that we do have in place. And I will reference some aspects of that this evening. More details associated with this will be presented at a future date and communicated by our specific school leaders. However, there's certainly that opportunity that we may find ourselves, and I hope we don't, in that 100% distance learning mode. So should that occur, we will certainly be prepared to deliver that. And I want to assure the community that it's going to be an entirely different experience than what our students had this spring. Back in the spring, we referenced that as now, as an emergency plan. We had to pivot and adapt our mode of instruction on the fly. Now, from that experience, from your feedback, from the feedback from our parent community, we have pivoted, and we're going to see plans that are going to look and feel very different. I know there was one question that was referenced earlier, whether parents would be given the option for 100% distance learning. Right now, the guidance that has been provided to school districts does not direct school districts to provide such an option. We have an obligation to provide 100% distance learning for those students that have medical conditions that would put them at risk being in a public space such as a school. We are awaiting more guidance that will come from the State Education Department and likely from the governor's office that could provide clarity on that. I do want to acknowledge that there are other school districts that have surveyed parents. But frankly, I believe that is premature because we do not have enough information as to what the specific responsibilities would be placed upon school districts, should that become our reality. However, if we were to find ourselves in that place, we certainly will be ready to serve our students and our school community. However, there'll be limitations and challenges that I'll address later on. We also explored the possibility of having half-days. So when we look at reducing the density in our schools by dividing students into two separate cohorts, we considered whether it would be viable to have students come in the AM and a separate group come in the PM or the afternoon. Here, we found it to be too difficult with respect to transportation, cleaning needs in schools, that frankly, we would be doubling our transportation obligations and costs, which would be a tremendous burden on the school district. And additionally, by thinking about all the flows of transportation, we'd be narrowing the actual amount of school time that we would have for our students. As you know, from the survey that went out, where we had approximately 85% of our parents respond and over 1,500 responses, which was quite impressive, and thank you for that. We looked at alternating weeks. So that's a model where students would come one week in-person, and then the following week, they would be involved in distance learning. We looked at another alternating structure where students came to school every other day and then essentially alternating every two days. And then the consideration for some students to be onsite 100% of the time. So in doing so, we presented this scenario at last Tuesday's Board of Education meeting. This model outlines a number of the different scenarios that we explored based upon feedback that came in from surveys and looking at the different cohort models. So in looking at this, when you see a letter A, consider that be one cohort of students. So think of an elementary school, please. An elementary school, essentially, let's split a class in half. Half the students on one day, a day A, half the students in person, day B. And on the flip side, they're in distance learning. So you can see the different scenarios as they play out, whether it's an alternating day, two days in, three days distance learning, and the different one week on, one week off scenarios. The flex day is a unique opportunity for us. This will provide for some of the accommodations that were referenced in an earlier question, I believe from Mrs. Littman. And looking at how the holidays play out within the course of the school year, that one, we can make adjustments. And depending whether it's a Monday holiday, a Friday holiday, we'll be able to tally all of the school days throughout the school year. And we can make a shift and have the A group slide forward to Tuesday and Wednesday, or the B group slide back to a Wednesday and Thursday based upon those needs. On those days, we will have a distance learning that will occur. So students generally were in school for two days in-person and distance learning three days a week. And I will outline further what that third day does look like. Want to share a little bit of the data. This is sampling of feedback of the data that we received from parents and looking at the different options that were presented to the school community and where the percentages of responses by each school played out. So in looking, the blue being entirely looking at distance learning, the red being two days in, three days remote, the yellow or orange in the rotating every other week, and then prioritizing particular student groups. So we can see where things played out and the volume of responses associated with them. The red bar being the two days in, three days remote being the most common response among all of the 1,500 respondents to our survey. We also surveyed our faculty and staff. And in doing so, we posed very similar questions and sought feedback on the specific models that we discussed in the parent survey. Here, we saw a little bit of different variation. Certainly, we can see the concern and anxiety that our teachers rightfully have about returning to work. And the 100% distance model coming out as the most popular response. But as I said at the top of the presentation, there's an obligation that we have, that we have to return to in-person learning. Our students need to be in the schools. So with all due respect to the parents where that was their first choice and our faculty members who that was their first choice, we need to find ourselves in a position where we're looking for a model to return to in-person learning. Therefore, with that in mind, much like the parent survey, you can see our faculty and staff's top choice when looking at the three different models where students would be onsite was certainly the two days in and three days on distance learning. So realistically, what does this mean to us? So here, we look at cohorts, and I'm going to talk about cohorts this evening as well. So we have students that will come to school on two days in-person each week. So if my child is in Cohort A, he or she will come in on Monday and Tuesday. And then they will participate in distance learning Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. If my child is in Cohort B, they will be in school Thursday and Friday, but distance learning Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. When we look at that flex day, we are going to have two and a half hours of teacher contact time on those Wednesdays. So picture the first half of that day is going to be entirely teacher contact time. At the elementary level, there will be specials that will meet, that will flow throughout this student's schedule. There will be small group opportunities. There may be whole group instruction that will be scheduled or individual conferences. For me, I think it's real important to pause here for a second because one of the areas where we receive feedback was about the amount of time needed at the elementary school for more synchronous instruction. So live instruction, the teacher interacting with our children as a full group, and also the need to be able to provide more small group instruction. So this model will provide for that. On the days that our students are in school, we'll have a whole built-out schedule. Will there be scheduled periods throughout the school day with live synchronous instruction? For our students that are participating in school, they will follow a similar pattern. We're going to be looking at our children that are learning from home, and those who are at school are going to follow the same curriculum and are going to have common pacing to the experiences that they're going to have in school to ensure that we're meeting common curricular objectives. At the secondary level, when we look at that flex day, we're looking to alternate class periods during that given day. So during that two-and-a-half-hour teacher contact time, we could look at there being a Week 1. And in Week 1, on that Wednesday, periods 0 through 4 will meet in that period of time. Then in Week 2, the following week, on that Wednesday, periods 5 through 9 will meet during that period of time. In that afternoon on a Wednesday, and very importantly, we are going to have a two-and-a-half-hour block where our teachers are going to be where our teachers are going to be involved in various collaboration, professional learning, and other planning activities that are essential in the distance learning model. I have to tell you, folks, that teaching and shifting from the in-person learning, that our teachers are so expert at, that it requires so much more work, so much more time in the generation of lessons and the planning and navigating the technologies, that we need to make sure that we're allotting this time. And you're going to see that if we want to compare notes district to district, that you're going to see the vast majority of districts are going to be providing times such as this, or they're going to be reducing the length of school days rather than providing this time to provide for that necessary planning and professional learning opportunity that exists. So the next thing is a conversation about cohorts. It's essential that we establish cohorts to ensure that we're meeting the Department of Health guidelines that have been communicated, that we're trying to find the opportunities to make sure we're meeting all the State Education Department guidelines and with particular focus on the students with the highest needs. And then meeting students' course requests wherever possible at the secondary level. So when I spoke last week, we talked about the concept of cohorts and how it would play out. And we had initially thought that we wouldn't be able to share this level of information today. I'm pleased that we're able to because it'll provide families with the opportunity to begin thinking about what your plans may look like come September. In looking at this, you'll see that there's three different cohorts, cohort A, B, and C. If you refer back to the prior slides, you can see where cohort A would plot in on the Monday and Tuesday for onsite learning and Wednesday through Friday for distance learning. But what I really want to stand out here for you is to look at how the groups are divided. When we look at across the district, our enrollment, when we look at our enrollment from school to school, we're lucky to be very well-balanced when we look at it alphabetically. So we have almost an even fifty-fifty split when we look at dividing our student body, A through L and M through Z. In doing so, we are able to therefore create cohorts where there will be vertical alignment in schedules, recognizing that families have children in multiple schools. So with that in mind, families can operate on similar schedules if they have one child in Dows Lane and another in a middle school. We can think about situations for childcare when older siblings may need to monitor younger siblings. We believe that level of alignment will be really important in providing for family needs as an important consideration here in the district. Cohort C really speaks to that other SED suggestion of looking at the need to serve our students with the greatest needs as much as we possibly can. So we have students whose programs require them to be in a special class to receive the supports and specialized education that they need. And those particular classes right now will, we're planning for them to attend in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We're continuing to look at other opportunities here, students of high need, to see how we can try to identify opportunities for more students to be in school on a consistent basis. Here, there's lots of challenges, as one could imagine, with different related services and the scheduling that we have to be able to complete for this to become a reality. So this is something, and maybe coming back to what Mr. Friedman referenced earlier, this recommendation is relatively solid in that we need to move forward with a recommendation that will go to the State Education Department and the Department of Health. But we're not going to stop our work today. We're going to continue to look for opportunities to expand and build upon our programs. But what is critical right now is that we start to give you directions to build expectations, to we start to have plans in place so our schools and our teachers can begin to plan. It's going to take a great deal of time to build out all the individual nuances of each school's schedule at the elementary level and the secondary level. But think about the unique nature of a secondary school where students have electives, where students aren't moving as a whole cohort or class throughout their day. We are trying to build tighter cohorts to limit the interaction among students. And literally, our administrators are going through a process of almost scheduling one student at a time, period by period throughout that school day, to create the tightest cohorts we possibly can. But for us to do that, and in order for us to meet all of those requirements that were set forth by the Department of Health, it's inevitable that some classes and schedule changes may need to have some alterations. That is a condition that's going to certainly be well beyond the control that we have right now based upon the constraints before us. This is also going to be a scenario where I don't want you to sit and think, oh, gosh, is my child's class going to be changed? Or, oh, gosh, is my son or daughter not going to get that one elective that he or she wanted in the high school? We have to plan as if you're having the class at the elementary level that you believe that you have, that your child is going to have the secondary schedule that you planned for him or her to have. And this respective school administration or staff will reach out to you in the coming weeks if there's a need for change, and they'll talk that through with you and tell you what that change is like and what options there may be for you. So when we think about this, we also have another real critical step and something that is, was really becoming newly contemplated in the last two weeks. And it was driven by, I think, the guidance that came out from Massachusetts. And I think this is a good example where we're making adjustments based upon experiences and ideas that are generated elsewhere. So at the last Board of Education meeting, I talked about all the different professional networks that we're engaged with, whether it's on the business and operations front, what Carol Stein is doing, on the instructional front, what Mary is doing with all the other assistant superintendents for instruction, our director of technology, our principals, assistant principals, our athletic director, our special ed leadership. Everybody's meeting and sharing ideas. I also serve on a number of different organizations that represent our region where we have specific task forces that are looking at this information. We're meeting with our legislators, we are meeting with State Education Department officials. We meet weekly with our Department of Health and George Latimer. Every Monday at eight-thirty in the morning, I can tell you, there's a number of superintendents from Westchester that are in a Zoom meeting with George Latimer and the DOH staff for the county. And there is incredible partnership and exchange, but what also happens is the sharing of ideas, the evolution of our thinking. So when we look at these experiences that we have and we read the documents that are coming out from different parts of the state or different parts of the nation or even internationally, we are learning from them. And here, we're seeing the value and the need to have a phased-in reopening of school. And this will be done for a number of critical reasons. We recognize that the transition back to learning, back to school, is going to be difficult for our students, staff, and families. We need to make sure that we're well-prepared to support everybody's needs, make sure that we have well-established routines, that we have all processes and protocols in place to be able to support every ounce of operation that is compliant with the Department of Health standards. Also, in looking at this model, we're able to provide some natural periods of orientation for our students. So think about a student that may have been in the middle school already for two years. They know where the lockers are, they know where the restrooms are, they know how to get to the cafeteria, they know how to get from one wing to the other wing. Now, all of a sudden, I return to school for my eighth grade year, and everything's changed. Half the students are there. There's particular traffic patterns that I have to follow. Maybe certain stairways, there are only one way up, one way down. I need to get a drink, how do I get a drink? Where is the water fountain that I can use? By the way, am I able to take a drink out of the fountain straight to my mouth? Or do I have to use a water bottle? What type of water bottle do I have to use? What are proper hygiene protocols? What do I do if I'm not feeling well in school? And I could go on and on and on. We have structures and systems that we're building to cover every aspect of every concern that I believe we can surface, and those that haven't been raised yet, we're going to address them. We need to make sure that we take time, that we take good care, to make sure that our staff is expert in these protocols, in these procedures, to ensure that they can provide for their safety and that of every one of our kids. And then when our students return, we want to do so in a slow fashion, in a smart way, that we can take time to orient students, answer personal questions. We want to be able to tour the buildings and show them their routines, understand the traffic patterns and the limitations that are going to be present, and do so without large groups of students passing each other in the hallway. So when we look at that second week of September, we're looking at a modified version. So if you think back to that hybrid model that I referenced earlier, we are looking at a scenario where we're having fifty percent of our student enrollment in school on any given day. During this week, we're going to be looking at about twenty-five percent, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. It's going to provide opportunities for a smooth transition. It's going to provide opportunities and assurance that our students and staff are going to be well-prepared to support everyone's health and safety needs. And we're going to be able to tend to everyone's social and emotional needs and to provide supports where necessary, and really start to slowly build a strong sense of community and culture in the Irvington schools. So an overview of what this looks like. Again, that first week in September, a hundred percent distance learning model. Second week, and you can see by example, you can see my cursor here, on the fourteenth, half of cohort A will be in attendance on the fourteenth. On the fifteenth, half of cohort A, part two, will be there. On Wednesday, we will have a full day of distance learning. And then in the latter part of the week, we're going to see cohort B split into those two different groups. And then clearly, the following weeks, we will fall into our regular hybrid schedule. With this illustration before you right now, I do want to pause to touch on an important health and safety point. One thing that you should really notice is that when we think about our student attendance, if we have concerns about our safety and health and the maintenance of our facilities and the sanitation, the sanitization that is going to happen, Wednesday provides that opportunity, doesn't it? So when we think, we're going to have ongoing cleaning in the buildings that I'll talk on about later. We're going to have cleaning that'll happen at night. But on Wednesday, without students in the building, we're going to have that opportunity to deep-clean every nook and cranny of a school. Then we'll be able to do the same thing at the end of the week, Friday evening through the weekend, to make sure our schools are as clean as they possibly can. So when we think about distance learning, that all of our students are going to participate in a regular scheduled synchronous learning schedule, there is going to be established schedules at each and every school level. So I want you to think about this and draw your mind back, your memories back to the spring, and think about the experiences your children had. And no need to share your opinions because we've heard a lot of them, and we have changed, we have pivoted. Our teachers solve the need, our teachers want more time with students. So we're going to look at our school days that are going to flow, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, regular-length school days. School days where our students are going to have regular scheduled instructional times throughout their school day at all levels. We're going to think about our secondary school students literally going through their same school schedule on those four days. At the elementary level, you're going to see defined schedules where our students are going to be engaged in direct learning, synchronous instruction, experiences with their teachers and their peers throughout that school day. This is going to be night and day, folks, from what we saw before, and it's going to be a more rigorous, involved experience. We're going to see greater opportunities to assess and monitor the progress and growth of our students as learners, and we're going to have greater engagement in learning across the board. The beauty of this model, that this will work if we find ourselves in a hundred percent distance learning. And I, like I said earlier, I hope we don't end up there, but if we do, we'll be ready. But at the same time, this is going to mimic the same model that we're going to have in place in a hybrid model. So the real change would be if we go from hybrid for, say, four weeks, and then we have to, for whatever reason, pivot to a hundred percent distance learning, whether that's in a school or the district, we literally will be following the same schedule. Your children will have the same classes at the same time. The only difference is that everybody would be learning from home as opposed to coming into school two days a week. So a question I saw was raised in one of the comments as Mr. Friedman was organizing how we'd handle questions tonight. We are exploring how we're going to address technology needs in our school, and it's going to happen at multiple levels and levels that we are prepared for. So when I think about technology, if I needed to buy a new device for my personal use at home, you know, if I headed over to Staples or Best Buy, I'd walk in and find the shelves empty. If, as a school leader, I wanted to purchase devices for our children here in Irvington, and you'd go to those typical providers that are on the state-approved contracts, if you reached out to them right now and asked, you know, we want to buy a hundred Chromebooks, we want to buy three hundred Chromebooks, they're going to tell you they have a waitlist, that they're backordered, end of September, end of October. Our staff have been working ahead. We began this planning back in June. We learned from our experiences in the spring, we started to identify what our needs were, and we've been planning ahead. Our Director of Technology, Jay Stromwasser, who's our moderator for this meeting, thank you, Jay, has been working diligently to source those devices and going through different creative routes and looking through different vendors and different pathways. We've already identified, Jay has already identified, how we can source devices that we need. So we are in a position, from a device standpoint, where we recognize we have to pivot a little bit. At the last Board of Education meeting, I spoke of the one-to-one initiative that we had launched this past year at the middle school. And during our budget process leading into this school year, we had conversation about advancing that one-to-one initiative to the high school, and we paused and weren't ready to do that. But we weren't thinking about these conditions that are before us today. We need to be in a position where we can ensure that we can put a device in every single child's hand. That device is going to provide for that common experience, the accessibility and the access, the equity that our children need here in Irvington. We want to be able to support our students and their families with technology challenges and glitches. And if we have some students that are working on a district Chromebook, some kids that are working on a MacBook, some kids working on a PC, that challenge is going to be insurmountable for us through a long period of time. Therefore, from a distance learning perspective, we want to have the opportunity to put one device in every student's hands. Then when we think about students being in school, when we think about hygiene, when we think about sanitizing spaces, we're not going to be able to share devices in school because we're not going to have the opportunity to be able to clean and sanitize them throughout a school day. So we need more devices in our schools. And while I'm not saying we need, we're going one-to-one for students during this period of time, we're going to provide the opportunity for every student to have a device, to make sure that the access is there, that make sure that we'll be able to support the tech needs that will surface, and to make sure that we are able to utilize that technology is a key part of learning during the in-school experience while providing for the students' health and safety. So when we think back to that distance learning model or the hybrid learning model, we got to think, gosh, how is the teacher going to connect with my child at home? So back in the, in the spring, we had different experiences. We had some teachers that produced videos that they, that they shared for certain learning experiences. Will that happen again? Probably. We had teachers that actually operated in a flipped classroom environment where they may have taught a lesson on a video or narrated a PowerPoint or some other experience and shared that to students who engage in a learning experience. Might that happen? Yeah, it might. But we also began to expand what we were doing. We started to utilize Google Meet, the Google meeting, virtual meeting platform extensively. And our expectation is that it is going to be the primary source for meeting, for teaching in the student experience while students are learning from home. So we know that there's limitations in looking at those different methodologies that we've talked about before. We know that our teachers are working so hard that are, that are planning already through the summer and getting ready for this fall, knowing that things are changing. But we know that they need other tools in their toolbox to be able to support learning. So one thing that we're looking at and implementing is the opportunity for teachers to livestream from their classroom. So I want to pause here and really try to calm concerns before they come to the top. I want us to think about livestreaming in a way that we're not livestreaming a classroom. It's not going out across the internet for everybody in the world to see. Literally, we're providing a tool for teachers to Literally, we're providing a tool for teachers to be able to connect with kids at home so we can have that level of parallel instruction that will occur for in-person learning and distance learning. There can be a similar pace. So if I'm teaching my class and you name whatever the grade level or the subject, I could be in the front of my classroom and I could have a camera on me as the teacher. And I am teaching the students in front of me in my classroom and the students at home are able to follow along on that video. So the video would be a one-way communication. It would have the video of the teacher. It may be the teacher in the front of the room. It may be the video of a smart display or interactive display board or the board in the front of the room. We're not turning and putting a camera on children in the classroom. We're not turning cameras on kids at home and broadcasting that anywhere. It's on the front of the classroom and to provide opportunity for the teacher to deliver live instruction to the kids that are learning from home. That can be supplemented with Google Meet experiences. So I could teach that lesson in front of that class. And I'm going to have half my students at home, half my students in the classroom in front of me. And then when I finish teaching that mini lesson, I can go check in with the kids in the classroom in front of me. Then I could turn and pivot and I can hop into a Google Meet with the kids at home and touch base with them, ask questions, answer their questions. So there's that level of engagement that can occur. So in thinking about rolling out technologies like this, all these additional devices, now live streaming from the Irvington schools, one has to ask like, not only what I addressed already, how are you going to get all these devices when there's shortages everywhere? We have a plan and it looks like it's going to happen. We actually increasing the bandwidth in the district. And we are introducing a redundant internet service. So if one network drops off, the service goes down or becomes overloaded, the other network picks up. And we've increased our bandwidth. So we'll have continuous connectivity in our schools. And we will have the capacity to be able to live stream from the vast majority of our classrooms at any point in the day without disruption. So.
Dr. Harrison, if I could just interrupt for a second, just want to remind you because I see some comments being posted. As I referenced earlier in the meeting, if you want to make a comment or ask a question, there'll be the opportunity to do so during our community comment period following the presentation. At that point, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. And you'll be able to speak and provide your comment. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, questions or comments that are posted in the chat function are not going to be answered. If you don't want to ask a question publicly, you can always send us an email at our address, board@irvingtonschools.org, and then a written response will be provided. But please hold your questions for the time being. I'll let you know when we're going to open it up again for community comment and tell the opportunity again to provide your name, address, and be recognized to do so.
Great.
Back to you, Dr. Harrison.
All right, thank you. So very deliberately, I focused on instruction first because that's where a lot of the questions lie in the community. And I understand that and I get that. When we think about the specifics of the school schedule, I gave you a general overview of what my recommendation is. You get a sense of where your children's day shakes out. You get a sense of what experiences will look like. And then a window in to how they are going to evolve from distance learning experiences in the spring to what they're going to become in the fall. Right now, our school administrators are working diligently to create this individual student schedules, class schedules that will be communicated with you in, in the next couple of weeks. So when we think about this, you're going to be within like two to three weeks, you're going to know exactly what days your children are going to go to school. You're going to know what their school day looks like. You're going to know what their, their structure of their day is, when to expect synchronous instruction, when to expect opportunities for small group instruction or personal conferences. You're going to have a sense of what your student's day is going to look like, whether in a hybrid model or in a hundred percent distance learning model. But behind all this, we can't do any of that teaching and learning onsite without making sure we have the necessary health and safety precautions in place. One essential requirement is that we're going to have to have an evaluation of everyone's health before they arrive at school. It's not practical to think that we as a small school district or any school will literally be able to ask every student and every staff member questions as they come in the door and take their temperatures and make sure that everybody's fever-free and that everybody hasn't traveled to a state where we'd have to quarantine. And I haven't been in the company of someone that has the virus. We have to rely upon self-reporting here. And in doing so, this is going to be a tremendous responsibility that is going to be placed on the parent community. And it's going to be a challenge for us to be able to navigate this. But these are new protocols that we're going to have to implement. And I'm going to say you're going to have to do it for the health and safety of your children. You're going to have to do it for the health and safety of our staff members. So we've already implemented a process like this in the summer thus far. While we were in distance learning, you know, there were limited staff members that were coming in and working here in district. But beginning of this month, all of our twelve-month employees, our support staff, our administrators have been working full-time here in the district. And every morning, we have to complete a digital survey that identifies whether we're fever-free, whether we have any symptoms that would be associated with COVID, where we have traveled to, and then we have to attest to the accuracy of that information. That information pours into one portal each day and it's immediately reviewed at the top of the morning. And it really leads to people self-identifying. And really, if there's any cautions or concerns, we know that at the start of the school day. We're going to have a similar process in place for our parents. We can mimic the system that we have in place and that we've created for our staff during the summer. But I want to say that we're also looking at an app-based system that you would be able to enter this information remotely from your smartphone in the morning. I need you to do this before your kids get in the car to come to school, before you walk out the door to walk to school, before you take them to the school bus. So know that I'm going to bombard you with reminders on the fall as we establish those routines. But know we're going to try to give you the tools to do this as efficiently as possible. And we're going to rely upon you to provide us with this information. If we find situations where it's not working, it's going to interfere with our ability to operate schools. It's going to pose a risk to the, the health and wellbeing of our students and staff. And it's really going to interfere with our students' ability to access their education. So we are working very closely here with the Department of Health in identifying what the absolute protocols are going to be for when we identify someone that has a question or concern that grows out of that, that survey. Or if you look to this last bullet, if we have a student or a staff member who's taken ill during the day, we are working with the Department of Health. And this was the focus of the meeting that we had with them on, on Monday morning, that they are developing a Q and A guidance document for us that's going to present a series of common scenarios that are going to tell us exactly how to respond if a certain situation arises. And then per our request, they're actually going to create a flow chart for schools to follow to be able to identify exactly what needs to be done in certain circumstances. Associated with this is the whole concept of contact tracing here. That when we look at this, that our schools don't have the responsibility or the ability or the expertise to do all that tracing that is necessary if there is a positive case of COVID. But the county does, the state does. As you know, they've trained thousands of people to do this kind of work. And if we have a case that we will collaborate with them, we've identified point people in each of our schools. The Department of Health already has everybody's cell numbers. They have their email addresses. They have their home numbers. If there's a case that pops up at ten o'clock at night, I'm going to get a phone call. And then I'm going to be on the phone planning with the respective school administrator or the administrators for the effects upon the coming school day. So the county is going to lead that process. They've outlined the protocols that we're going to follow to make the connections from school to county and county to school. And then they are going to memorialize that all in uniform protocols that are going to be implemented across Westchester County. When we look at this last bullet, and again, want to speak to what will happen if a child or staff member is ill in the school day and displaying symptoms that would be of concern, that could potentially relate to COVID. Those students are going to be quarantined in an isolated spot in the school. We have plans that are spelled out and well-developed by our amazing nurses where students are going to be cared for. They're going to be isolated and supervised, of course. But they are not going to come in contact with others. And those students are immediately going to leave school from that location. We have processes and protocols in place for how that communication will occur. We have processes and protocols in place as to how that student or staff member will exit the building. And then how that space and other spaces where that child or staff member may have been will be immediately cleaned and to make sure that there are no risks that will be present. So when we think about what life is going to be like in our schools, you know, it's so difficult to sit here as, as a teacher, as a principal, as a superintendent, as a dad, to think that we're having this kind of conversation today. But in the Irvington schools, all of our students and staff members will wear masks in school. There will be regular mask breaks that will, that will occur. We're going to certainly provide students with that relief, staff with that relief. But it's going to happen in controlled settings. It's going to happen in settings where we can absolutely guarantee that there is a minimum of six feet space between every single person in that room. We're going to take advantage of outdoor opportunities to be outside as much as we possibly can to not only to breathe the fresh air, but to enrich learning. So we're going to be outside and that may be the perfect opportunity for some of these mask breaks. But we need to make sure that where schools are safe as they can, so everyone in our schools is going to wear a mask. In doing so and to support that, parents will be asked to provide their children with one cloth mask that they will wear, one that's comfortable for them. As a school district, we will have the inventory to provide every student with one mask per week. And every faculty and staff member with five masks per week to make sure that everybody is well-equipped, to make sure that we always have the supplies on hand as needed. When we look at the mask requirements, there will be a couple of caveats to that. Understanding that we may have some folks with some health challenges that would not be able to wear a mask. In those given cases, we'll have appropriate medical documentation. We'll put in the necessary safety protocols to protect that individual and others. But based upon ADA requirements, we cannot exclude such an individual from accessing their education based upon that restriction they may have. We're going to periodically sanitize all hot, high-contact spaces. I want to indicate that when I use the word periodically, I don't want you to think that's like they're going to get to it when they can get to it. We're going to be doing it periodically. That means regularly. Organized structures and periods throughout our school day. We're going to, our custodians are going to be wiping down and sanitizing all high-contact surfaces throughout the day. There's going to be general cleanings that occur each and every day in the, in the classroom and in the schools and those deep cleanings that I referenced on Wednesdays and then Fridays into the weekends. We're going to train on proper hygiene practices that will be mandated in our schools. So that is going to have many different levels. That is going to range from how do we cough and sneeze? And as awkward as it may be with a mask on, we're still going to have to make sure that we, we talk about that and train to do that. We have to talk about proper hand washing protocols and how we're going to do that. We're taking steps that are going to make sure that we're going to have not only our staff and students trained in these protocols and practices, but we're going to have them clearly posted in plain, simple language all over the buildings and in common spaces. We're going to put in traffic control processes in our schools to limit traffic in hallways and stairways. In some schools, and particularly you may think of the elementary schools, we may limit certain stairways to one-way traffic so we don't have students come in contact face-to-face with one another. We're going to look wherever possible to serve lunch in classrooms. We're going to have students spaced out in classrooms and so that we're not having the law, large group congregations in a cafeteria. We're going to look at adding alternate locations for meal distributions and eating at the secondary level. We're not going to be able to do it all for the middle school and high school in the cafeteria. So we're going to have to break up that eating space into other spaces that will be supervised to ensure that the social distancing continues. When we have distance learning in place, we will continue to provide meals as we did through this school year. And we'll identify those particular pickup places or distribution centers that may be similar to this year with one location in Terrytown and another in Irvington. Or they may change. But we're going to be able to provide that same level of distribution to ensure all of our students have access to healthy breakfast and lunch. We're also adding additional hand sanitizing and hand washing stations. So back in the spring, we added dozens and dozens of hand sanitizing stations across the district. We've ordered more. We've actually purchased hand washing stations that limit the need for students to actually go into restrooms to wash their hands. It will have added locations that will be monitored and regularly sanitized by our custodial staff. And one critical factor here in maintaining the health and safety in our school environment is to limit visitors. So as much as we want to see parents as a part of our school community and in our buildings, it's just not going to be able to happen in the way we, we used to be accustomed to. So in looking at this, everything that we're going to do is going to be through virtual meetings whenever possible. And when a visitor does arrive at a school, it has to be for essential business that couldn't be handled otherwise. And when you arrive, trust and be ready that not only you're going to have to sign in with our security guard like you would and have your ID scanned and all those things, but you're going to have to complete a health survey as well to make sure that you're well and that you're not bringing any risk to our school environment through your presence. School buses will be another challenging experience for all of us. This is an area where there's a little bit more flexibility and latitude for school districts. The State Education Department referred or defers to the Department of Health on guidance and where possible, social distancing will be implemented. But any given time, all students and staff on a bus will wear masks. There won't be any exceptions except for those medical exemptions that I referenced earlier. But when we think about this, I don't want parents who are going to put their children on a school bus or need to put their children on a school bus to become overly anxious at this moment. So when we think about the Irvington reality, we know that we have a lot of kids that walk to school or walk with friends, walk with their parents to school. We have a lot of our parents that drive their children to school. But then we do have a large number of children that take advantage of the transportation service. In one of our recent surveys, we questioned whether or not parents would utilize the transportation service. In doing so, we had data that told us, and we presented this last Tuesday, that we, right now, only foresee about thirty-eight percent of our students actually that are eligible for transportation, taking the school buses. So when you picture that crowded, dazzling bus that could have fifty kids on it on a daily basis and you think of thirty-eight percent of that, all of a sudden, you start doing that math in your head. And then all of a sudden, I want you to pause. And I want you to think that that fifty percent then gets cut in half again because that, I'm sorry, thirty-eight percent gets cut in half by fifty percent because of the cohort, the A and B days. So we're going to see the opportunity to social distance. We're going to look for the siblings that ride buses together to sit together, to be able to have other students spread out further, for us to be able to contain students that live together that are in their regular groups together. And that when we arrive at a school, we're going to take students off the bus. They're going to come in in a very controlled, orderly way so there isn't congregating. And then our custodians are going to come down and wipe down all the high-contact surfaces, handrail seats with disinfectant wipes on each, in every school bus between the stops at each school. Again, as a reminder, you're going to have, as a parent, complete that health survey prior to reporting to bus stops. So we have that data and so that you have that assurance that your child is healthy and fit to, to come to school. But this is going to be a challenge for us and another shift that we're preparing for. Our district is going to follow up in the next week or so with another survey that's going to go to all families who are eligible for bus transportation. And we're going to want to get a pretty firm answer from you to know whether or not you're going to ride a school bus. And if right now you were to tell us to say, you know what, Chris, we're going to drive our children to school, but we want to take the bus home. But we want to take the bus home, we will accommodate that. If you're saying that we're going to drive our kids both ways or we're going to walk both ways rather than use the bus. That's great, but no, if your plan shifts in a month and we're still operating in this model. You're going to be able to get back on the school bus. We're not going to not give someone a seat because you're trying something out that didn't work for you. But with that data, we are going to then modify our bus routes that are being planned. To make sure that we can provide as much social distancing as possible. And to make the routes as efficient as they possibly can be. So. Really, that is a window in to a lot of the key information that we're looking at here in the Irvington schools. I've introduced the plan, a required plan for return to school. As I said, the governor's requiring that we have to be prepared for our children to return to school in September. We have to prepare for a hybrid model to comply with the Department of Health requirements. So we've done that. We have our traditional hundred percent onsite learning models that are prepared to go that look like. And operate how our school schedule wise would work every other year except for this year. But with all the other health and safety measures in place. And then we have a hundred percent distance learning model. That's in that has been outlined. And that model is going to mirror exactly what happens in that hybrid model. So that if we find ourselves in a position where we're shifting from hybrid to hundred percent distance learning. It really happens with a flip of a switch and the only difference is children are home as opposed to being in school. On all of those five days, I want to show you that our faculty and staff are here in school. On that Wednesday, when there is teaching. That is occurring for the two and a half hour block that I identified in the morning. Our teachers are going to be teaching from their Irvington classrooms. They're going to have their resources available, they're going to have the technology available to make sure that they can deliver the best possible instruction. I also reviewed how we are mapping out and organizing our protocol, our cohorts. I talked about how we're going to have a phase opening to our school year to make sure. That we have a safe, organized start where we're able to train everyone. And to support everyone for a safe transition back into school. We talked about the monitoring of health and well being of our students and staff on a daily basis through the different reporting systems. And the the interface that we're going to have on a regular basis with the Westchester Department of Health. For reporting any suspected cases and for contact tracing. And then I spoke about transportation and building sanitization. In that process, you can imagine there's lots and lots of detail. That every one of those bullets on each of those slides. Has whole action plan that is being developed or has been developed for that. There's a lot of work to do, folks. But I I'm feeling really comfortable and confident in our staff. We have an amazing group of people here in Irvington that love your kids, that can't wait to teach your kids again. We're going to be ready. Our folks in our schools, our staff anxious, yeah, we are. But you know what, we all are, but coming together in the spirit of our 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 school community. We're we're going to build that bolt hole pride and we're going to navigate this one together. You know, we're planning to be flexible. We're going to adjust our plans based upon your feedback and there will be feedback loops throughout the course of the year. We're going to adjust our plans based upon our own experiences and how the schools are operating. And then we're going to have to adjust what happens around us. But we're on that path to be ready. There's going to be challenges along the way, you know, how are we going to get all the PPE that we need? We have all the cleaning products that we possibly could ever need. But geez, how are we going to get enough enough masks, how are we going to get? Rubber gloves for the staff that need them, how are we going to get face shields for the staff that needs them? Those are the challenges that we're going to face, but we're working. Not only with the Department of Health and acquiring them, but we're working through the state. But the Boce structure to be able to acquire them. Where they surveyed us and they know what we need in Irvington. They know what all the other districts need in the state. You saw the governor is now taking action to have those items produced manufactured here in New York. So the hope is what we can't get outside of our stakeholders, we're going to be able to acquire from these new sources that are being developed here internally. So it's a long road ahead, we have a lot of work to do. We're waiting to next week to see when the governor is going to make an announcement as to whether or not we're returning to school. And whether that's going to be distance learning, whether that's going to be a hybrid model. But regardless of that decision, we have the plans in place. Plans being developed that we're going to be ready come September. This Friday, I will publish a comprehensive reopening plan. I know some folks in the community were referring to this as our reopening plan. This is some highlights from that plan. We have a roughly seventy page document that has dozens and dozens of hyperlinks from it. That will be posted on our new reopening Irvington U F S D webpage. On some point on Friday. And you could feel free to peruse that to see all the detail and all the thought and planning that's gone into our work here in Irvington. So with that, Mr. Friedman, I certainly will open up to comments and questions from trustees and community.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, for that presentation, I know the amount of work. That you and your entire staff has put into this and. Appreciate this update and hearing where we're at. And the thoughtfulness that you've taken with the approach and and so forth. Playing my role as radio host, I think that this is usually the point in time where if we're in the. CPR room, people would start to stand up and get in front of the microphone to ask their questions, so. By my clock, it's about nine oh five, so. If you would like to make a public comment, I ask you to start putting your name in the Q and A. Portion of the Zoom at this point in time with your name and address and once. The trustees are finished with their questions and comments. I'll then look to recognize those in the audience who would like to make their comments, so. Doctor, Doctor Harrison, you know, thank you, I guess I'll start. Could you just talk a little bit, though, about? The evolution and what about the AA Flex BB model? Caused it to win out over some of the other models that have been considered and and some of the strengths that you saw? In this relative to the other options?
Right, yeah, certainly. And I would invite Mary Ellis to to join in and share her her thinking and experience as well because Mary led our. Curriculum Instruction reopening subcommittee. So in looking at this, we really looked for the opportunity and the need to ensure that we had. In-person learning experiences for children. When looking at the models that where we had alternating days or alternating weeks. There was concern with both of them, first the alternating weeks. There wasn't that level of continuity and and really the teachers did not like that idea of the distance between the time that children would be in school and. Physically being apart from the kids for that many consecutive days. But then when we looked at a model of true alternating days like an A B A B approach. Here, there was kind of the flip side of the concern that there wasn't the opportunity to develop enough continuity. With kids being in school every other day. So by pairing of the two days, you're able to have that continuity, you're to be able to develop touch points with children. Be able to follow up and have those personal engagements with kids. And just to develop regular patterns in their lives. We also thought a lot about the practical side of it and thinking about the effects on families. And the needs for childcare and work arrangements that folks inevitably are going to have to make. And if we were in a pattern where we knew it was certain days every single week. It would be much easier, at least to our belief, for parents to plan. I know none of this is easy, it stinks for everybody. But at the end of the day, we thought that this was a model that was more sound instructionally. A model that was more sound. In support or more. Put us more able to be able to support students socially and emotionally. And was really in an approach where it would may work better for parents. It also provided that that opportunity for the midweek cleaning on the Wednesday. It also allowed for that shift in a calendar. If we have a holiday on a Monday that we could collapse the week. And and then have, you know, A A B B and provide that level of flexibility. So there were many, many tiers to this, Mary, I don't know if you have anything to add that I I didn't reference.
I just want to address Brian's question about how we got there. I and thank you, Doctor Harrison, for the explanation of what that model actually will look like. I know there are lots of people out there who are asking. Have we looked at especially for the younger students, having them in every day? I can't begin to tell you how many hours have been spent trying to make that work. We've been, we did it first in committee and then with our administrative team and then with the administrators, Dr. Cantor and Ms. Greenspan. From Dallas Lane. And each time we just felt that we we absolutely could not get past. The operational and health and safety concerns to create something. That would be viable, that we thought would really work. And we'd leave it and the next morning, one of us would call the other again and say, could we look at it again? And we would go through it all again, so I I assure you. That we came to this model after tremendous deliberation and consideration and even after we selected it. We kept trying to see if we could find other ways. So please know we looked at that, we understand the needs of children at different ages. And I'd ask that you consider that when we're in school and what we would now consider a normal environment. Students of very different ages are in school for roughly the same period of time each day for five days. And what happens in each building within that time looks very different so that it's appropriate. For the age of those students and this will look exactly the same. While it might be the same day, what happens within the day is very carefully designed to meet the needs of the students at that developmental age.
Thank you. Doctor Harrison, another question, I think this may be something that'd be helpful to to talk a little bit about is the. Professional development and the resources that the staff will have access to. Even before school starts to help them progress in their adjustment to this new to this model and to distance learning in general.
Sure, so actually, we have a number of staff members from across the district that are actually. In a summer hybrid learning professional learning institute. That is going on over a number of sessions being facilitated through Boce's. That many word nets now going to become tiring, that cohort. Is representative of our school district with teachers at different grade levels in different schools with different expertise and content areas. So they're going to be able to bring their experiences and their learning back to share it with our staff. Over the the course of the spring. Mary and Jay Stromwasser, our Director of Technology, developed a tremendous inventory. Of online resources, so. There were numerous on demand webinars and workshops that were identified. Some that were produced by educators, some that were produced by professional organizations and others by technology companies. That we actually have been sharing them with staff. We are creating actually a special portal for all that information right now for staff, that'll be one central clearinghouse. Where all these different professional resources will be stored and they will be on demand. We also have numerous workshops that were trained or developed by our own in-house leaders. So whether that was Jay himself. Or numbers of our Google PD team here in the district. Where they actually recorded their own webinars and workshops that are now available online for our staff internally in district. So we have formalized learning experiences that are happening. We have curriculum work that's planned through the summer. We also have other work related to assessment that is planned for a couple of comprehensive days. Of work that's going to engage teachers from all different levels. To to find ways to make sure we're assessing students' needs upon the reentry to school. And then effectively assessing students' growth and progress throughout the school year. So we have multiple places where learning is formally occurring. And then teachers are going to have that flexibility then to be able to turn in their free time during the next five, six weeks. To be able to tune in to an area that they're interested in or an area that is a personal need to them based upon. The resources that the district has assembled for them.
I'd also like to add to that, that a lot of the. Writing that is coming out now about the need for not only students but also staff as they return. Is getting careful attention to the social emotional needs. Of all of the people in our educational community as as we reenter. Buildings after being out for quite a while and as Chris mentioned before, there's a lot of anxiety. About that, so part of our work on our superintendent conference days before we start the year. Will be helping our staff acclimate back to being in school. And helping them with tools that they can use to then help our students as they acclimate to coming back as well.
Thank you. Doctor Harrison, another one of the questions I think a lot of the trustees have heard from community members. Is around a hundred percent remote option. And if you could talk about that option and what challenges there may be around that and. What's the what's the potential for that type of an option along with what you've presented?
Certainly, so as I kind of alluded to in the the top of the presentation. We know that there are districts that are surveying parents and whether they're looking to get a sense of what the need or interest level is. Or if they're looking to plan to provide that to students. It is not clear that it is one a requirement of school districts. And and if so, what that obligation will look like. We know that we have to provide that opportunity for students who have medical needs that would preclude them from being present in the school environment. When I think about that shift, though. If we were put in a position whereby whether it was directed by the state education department or Governor Cuomo. To offer that to parents. I admittedly have concern about the impacts that it will have on instruction. So you have to think about the good care that we're taking in our planning right now to develop. Balanced classes where we have not only meeting the social distancing requirements and the capacity limits of particular classrooms. But we're we're in a place where we're trying to look to have two balanced groups where we have. You know, ten students and ten students or nine students and eleven students in a class. If that's. Model was to break down because of more families electing to keep their children home. We would look at our model where we'd implement likely the distance learning that I referenced throughout the presentation. But it's really going to break down the effectiveness of the experience for in-school learning. To think about that, all of a sudden you go from that ten and ten, it's split between A and B or nine and eleven between A and B. And all of a sudden you have five and fifteen. That experience is going to shift. That the teachers, the demands on the teacher to be able to accommodate the needs from home. Are going to completely shift and it's going to make the experience much more challenging for our educators. I'd also say that I'm concerned about the the limited social experiences. We want to be able to support our children in school. We want our students to be able to have the interactions with their peers, albeit limited, social distancing and masks. We want to have that levels of normalcy in their world. And that I believe would interfere with it. So if that opportunity is presented by for the community. By state education department and or the governor will make the adjustments necessary. But right now, it's not an option that I feel that we could consider. There is not clear enough guidance as to what our requirements are and to what we would have to do in those different scenarios. So we're waiting for that guidance, it's something I can tell you, all my professional organizations are are calling for. That's superintendent associations, different education advocacy groups. And even in consultation with our own districts attorneys and interpreting all of the guidance. They are of similar mind that it's we're not in a position where we can. One, offer it and two, it it does not appear that it is a requirement, so at this point in time. Our expectation is to follow the direction established by the governor that we should be preparing for. Our children all to return to school in the hybrid model that I proposed this evening.
And I I have probably I could go on for another half hour with questions, but I don't want to monopolize the time, so I'll. At this point, turn to my other trustees for their questions and then we'll have a round of follow-up questions from the trustees. And then we'll go turn back to the community comments. Just just a reminder for those of you who want to make a comment, just please put your name and address in the comments and we'll call on you. At the appropriate time to make your comments. Comments that are left in the Q and A, we're not going to answer in that. Comments that are left in the Q and A, we're not going to answer in that fashion. You can always get a response through the email, as I've said, but please just put your name and address and we will then recognize you at the appropriate time. So with that, Dave, if you'd like to ask your questions.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Dr. Harrison, thank you for a very thoughtful second presentation in a row. The continuation of last week's, there's a very clear thread. Appreciate it. I keep saying to myself, okay, so here's where we find ourselves. You know, when I look at all of these, you know, materials and things about all the things and all the people talking. And the first thing I want to do is thank you and Ms. Ellis and Ms. Stein and the entire staff, Ms. Davies, and everybody who's focused in on and paying attention to the efforts being put forth by everybody involved. So thank you very much, teachers. My heart's, my heart is with all of you and parents with you as well. We're all going through this together. With that, Brian, you asked a couple of my questions. Thank you very much. You know, so, you know, talking about the 100% remote piece, one thing I'd like to just tack on to that is I would love or urge or ask that we try to find some potential solutions because, you know, I think about what-ifs in terms of, you know, a child who is exposed to the virus some way, shape or form, knock on wood that that doesn't happen, but they are, and they come home and someone in the home has a pre-existing condition some sort that is, you know, and they say to you, hey, I need this 100% remote option. And how, what are the solutions for those kinds of situations? As well as a solution, and again, you don't have to have this now, obviously, but as this is an evolving process, you know, so I'm thinking about who's, or a parent or family that says, I'm not ready to take this risk right now with my child. You know, and how do we approach those situations as they come up? That's the first question. The second piece is, again, you did a wonderful job, a mark of another good presentation is that you answered this question which was focused around the idea of the differentiating schedules across buildings based on need. And I thought you did a really good job of answering that. Still have some questions about, you know, start times and end times. So if you could address what time a day might start, what time a day might end, what to expect in terms of hours in front of a screen, which leads me to ultimately, my last question is, you know, more food for thought is how can we make distance learning when it's happening, whether you're in school or out of school? How can we make it less about the screen? Thus far, the conversation in regards to the distance learning has been about the screen and the program and the, you know, the ability to use certain technologies. We can still think about distance learning in terms of designing really rigorous tasks and experiences for children and using, you know, Google Gmail as a Dropbox for the work, right? So I just, I just wonder if we could think about that as we progress through this designing experience, this unique experience. And those are my questions. Again, time of day and frame of time, frame for in-class, out-of-class stuff.
Yeah. So David, I'll just answer, make a few points there and, you know, that could be a whole nother presentation in itself, right? The different points you raised that are also important. Right now, we should be looking and planning for what is our regular school day and the regular school hours. So if you look at the traditional hours at each of our schools, that is what we are planning for. And when we think about the idea of the use of technology, I don't want to present that there's an over-reliance on that. And I can see where I may have done that in my presentation, right? And what I was trying to highlight was how we really heard and processed and valued the feedback we got from our parent community in that survey back in June. In doing so, there was a great call for more live instruction, more synchronous instruction, more opportunities for small group instruction, and that's what we're going to deliver upon. However, what I think is embedded in that and sits behind that is the continuity of instruction, right? That level of engagement. So there's going to be opportunities where there are going to be regular live experiences for student and teacher engagement. But there's, that's where the beauty of technology may come in, that we are going to be able to use Google Classroom for the submission of work, that we're going to be able to use email as another service. This summer, Google Meet is going through a whole evolution. And I think they're going to try to outdo Zoom now. And they're going to, all the bells and whistles that Zoom has that Google didn't have are going to be in place. That we're going to be able to have backgrounds like we have behind us today. So students can have privacy in their homes. We're going to, there's going to be the ability for breakout groups and sessions. So a teacher can actually turn and actually break up groups into small different groups and have different conversations going on in a class. So the technology is going to be a tool. But here, what we're looking at is the regular contact between students and teachers. And technology is going to be one of the vehicles for that. Mary, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to enrich my, my response?
One of the things that I think is important to think about is, and we've talked about this before, is that even when children are in the classroom, not all of the time that they're in the classroom, are they one-on-one with the teacher or even just even a group focused on the teacher? There'll be an introduction to a topic and then very often students will spend time in independent practice. And that independent practice, the application of skills can be away from the screen. And then they come back to either hand in the product that they were working on or to engage in a conversation about that. So while you may see, you know, a literacy block similar to what happens in a classroom, not all of that literacy block will be the student looking at a screen. So it'll be an in-and-out kind of process. I think, David, the other thing you said, which is really wonderful, and I think our teachers are becoming more and more exciting, more and more excited about applying the ideas of project-based learning, of longer assignments, of lengthier assignments that are done in chunks and then handed in with check-ins with the teacher along the way. I think that we're going to see a lot more of that now as teachers think about how to apply the way they did that in a school setting, how to apply that in a distance setting.
Thank you. Dave, I think you were done at this point. Beth, you're up.
Okay. So I just wanted to start not with a question but with a comment. So in the process, even between the last two weeks, there have been several community conversations. And in those, people are communicating their desire to volunteer in various ways. And it happens to be that I'm leaving my role as the PTSA liaison and Michael Hanna is taking that on. And I did meet with the two co-presidents, Dimpina Kenny and Delina Cody, who wanted me to say and gave me authority to say tonight that people who are thinking about that, who are thinking about volunteer opportunities in the school district that serve the community, to please reach out to them. The PTSA website has been updated. It's www.irvingtonnyptsa.org. And there is a portal there for that. Just as our administrators were talking to us about portals that serve staff, this is a portal that is being created to serve those in the community who want to serve the community. So I thought it was an important opportunity tonight to report that out to the public. But going from there, I wanted to go to my questions. So I was happy to hear that there are weekly meetings with the County Department of Health. And in those meetings, I gather that in addition to learning your protocols, you're finding out sources for PPE. I think that was discussed. But what I'm wondering is when you talk about what's learned there and also about, you've talked about the materials you have to help your staff learn over the summer, we've got five to six weeks before the beginning of school. Is it possible that there are materials that can help our families learn about things like hand hygiene, mask wearing? And if you do find an app, that could be a countywide app that identifies your health screening for staff and and students to educate on that in advance?
Yeah, 100%, Beth. So I appreciate the question and and what I'm about to say isn't politically motivated in any way, but I've got to say George Latimer and his staff have been amazing throughout all of this. And for them to schedule a little, you know, weekly meeting with us to address our needs and to share information has been nothing short of impressive and the partnership has been incredible. As we are, you know, we're going through our different phases and this has been a never-ending task to get to the point where we are today. And we still have a lot more reporting and planned development to do and then operationalizing our plans. But a part of that step is, in our communication plan, is identifying those resources that we are going to utilize for professional development and student training in the schools and identifying series of resources that we'll be able to provide to the school community. There's numerous how-to or Q and A documents that we're beginning to inventory. There's also many different age-appropriate videos that are being produced that we'll be able to share with the school community, some that we can put on our social media accounts, others that we'll send out directly to parents with different hyperlinks for parents to use at their convenience. So we are doing that. They'll also be inventoried on our new reopening Irvington UFSD website. And all those resources will continue to be housed there to be on-demand supports for families and students, just as we're developing similar resources for our staff.
Okay, thank you for that. In a similar vein, with when we talk about this regular contact that's been able to be provided to Westchester County School Districts with the Department of Health, which is really something that's very worthy and important for all of us to do since the real focus is the safety of our staff and our our students while providing excellence in education. I was wondering in terms of the reopening committee meetings that led to all the work that has been done to the state, is there a plan to continue additional reopening committee meetings moving forward as we go to reopening? And will there continue to be parent representation on this?
Yes. So right now, as I said, we were working at a pace to get to where we were to be able to deliver on this product. I do believe that there's going to be a need to go forward to continuing to evaluate our experiences and to continue to have those committees meet on a periodic basis. There may also be a need to be able to expand some of the membership, alter some of the membership because folks may not be able to continue to make the commitment. You know, when I think about that, that planning process, you know, within a few weeks period of time, these committees met like anywhere from like a half a dozen to like eight times. It was a huge time commitment and they did incredible work. And so, you know, I don't necessarily foresee that, that level of commitment moving forward. But we're not prepared to disband the committees. For example, if we start to run into some challenges or we're experiencing difficulties or with some, an aspect of our instructional model, or if we're seeing opportunity to enhance one of those models, how do we want to deal with that? We don't want to do that in isolation. We developed this, this dynamic plan that it's going to be published on Friday because of the good thinking and the commitment of all those folks. So we'd be foolish if we didn't take advantage of that, that resource moving along.
Hold on, I meant to unmute myself instead of stopping my video. Okay. So with that in mind, I mean, I appreciate that and thank you for emphasizing the flexibility. I mean, you have talked about changing guidance from the Department of Health at the state and county level, as well as from SCD and also from additional information that you might collect over time involving, for example, busing or the willingness of certain people to forego busing in order to reach other goals. For example, when we talk about the overlay of interests perhaps between our younger learners perhaps needing more time in school and our older learners having cohorts that may need more flexibility to allow access to the electives for which our school district is rightly well-known. So it's fabulous to hear really that within that flexibility and the continued ability to meet buildings may be able to change within this model, which is for your 731 submission to the state. So thank you for addressing the continuing existence of flexibility in this context. And that's it for me for now, but I'm glad we got to go around again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, thank you. So similar to our last meeting, obviously, anyone who, who is considering this presentation and all the work that's going into it, you know, has to offer our thanks for the dedication to your team and everyone else who's been involved from the committees and the staff. You know, a conversation I've had with a few people is that normally, and I think many, you know, community members understandably so are in summer mode, but that is not at all the case when it comes to preparing for the 21, 2021 school year. It's full steam ahead in terms of trying to figure out how to do this. I just want to say thank you, you know, so much of what's happening in terms of the planning. Clearly, you know, you have a 70-page document that the district will be coming out with. And everybody has so many questions and until you hear something related to the answer to that question that can cause a lot of stress. For me, one of the biggest stressors when hearing that, oh, we're going forward with the hybrid model was, you know, is that something we can do out of the gate? You've clarified since then that there's this phase in process and you know, I think in the presentation slides, you, you shared some pretty fixed dates, but I think what I heard underneath it is that it actually is reliant on any number of aspects that need to, to come together for hybrid to be ready to move forward. So I don't know, as you go forward, it becomes more realistic in terms of expectation setting to change it from necessarily being those set dates, this week we're doing this, this week we're doing this to, you know, you know, where are we with our, with our, you know, COVID spread data? Where are we with our technology preparation? Where are we with our planning in terms of the instructional basis? I don't know if there's a model like, you know, one thing that has been popular with Cuomo is his, you know, sort of rubrics. And I know in education, we also like rubrics. Is that something that might be in the future to help us see where we're at?
Yeah, I don't know. It's something I'd have to give some thought if we wanted to look at it in such an analytical way, but you know, our work is, I don't know how concrete it is to be able to align all these different indicators in a particular matrix, but it's something we can certainly give consideration to. You know, one of the themes that I think I wove indirectly throughout the presentation this evening was the concept of flexibility and understanding that we, we need to make sure that we're going to do what we're going to do well. And we need to do so with the health and safety of everyone in mind. And just like Beth said prior to you, we have to provide for the health and safety while still tending to the excellence in education that we strive for. So we are going to have to continue to monitor and adjust. You know, frankly, there's a piece to it that the governor's metrics are going to drive a lot of what we do. So we have our different readiness indicators and very clearly, there's always going to be need for more growth and more learning as it relates to our level of preparedness to teach in this model. Again, it's going to be an entirely new experience and process. So we're going to do our best to support our teachers and I know they're really committed to doing a fabulous job. But the, the ideas of some things that can be checkmarks and looking at benchmarks for, you know, the, the collection of certain data for transportation, the completion of a technology infrastructure enhancements and the arrival of devices and PPE. Those are all critical things that I believe that we could look at. And I actually think that CDC has some frameworks that could inform something like that. So I keep saying, when things settle down, I've still finished, finished projects from, from, from March right now. But when things settle down a little bit and we have a little chance to maybe get a couple of hours extra sleep tonight and and leave the office once in a while, I think that's one opportunity we could look at for some of those indicators for future updates for, for board and community.
Yeah. You know, one other aspect is, it is heartening to hear the work and the commitment from the county. You know, one who often advocates for that regional coordination. We're not in this alone. We're in this with all these other school districts and communities in our county and beyond that. But there's also, in addition to the planning, the reality checks. And there was a story today that was a reality check in that there is a school that is open in, you know, not far from us and they had a positive case that became two and then three faculty members and then today, three students. And some of the feedback is that if that was September, mid-September in multiple school districts, they were not ready yet. So I think we need to keep that in mind. So I think we need to keep that in mind in terms of those preparations that that's, you know, we're, we're all reading that, we're all seeing that. And so we want to be inspired, we want to, you know, we see the hard work that's going into it, but we don't control this virus.
No, no, and I think, and I don't want to think that we're going to be insulated from any of the risks. We're doing the best we can. There's no assurance. We're filing all the guidance and in so many cases, we're, we're, we're going to exceed it. I could think of all the different cleaning protocols and technologies that Carol and Gary have invested in to, to make our schools safe. But there's, you know, we can't, we can't combat a, a virus in a, in a school. And where I look at some of the differences with the challenges that you're seeing in, in the particular school that you're referencing, it's a special acts district that you're referencing. You know, these were schools that were forced with, you know, closing out the school year distance learning and a couple of weeks later returning for in-person learning. And they didn't have the opportunity and I feel they're really disadvantaged in having all the, the level of thought and planning that's gone into our process. They literally had a couple of weeks and then they had kids back in their buildings. And granted, they're on a small, much, much, much smaller scale than even Little Irvington. But they didn't have the, the opportunity to plan and they don't have the resources that a district, typical school district would from staff and finances. So they have a lot of hurdles to clear. They had a lot, but there's a lot of lessons to be learned from that. I can tell you, the superintendent in that district is in one of the weekly meetings that I participate in and, and I hear all the stories and experiences and certainly will learn from them.
Yeah. And just in the reference to special act for, for, you know, community members, which we have so many here, if you haven't looked up special act schools, worth us looking into because they really do tremendous work and are amazingly under-resourced. So worth getting to know about. Just a last thought is that I, I think, you know, and you and I have had these conversations when we talk about communications, that faculty, parents, students really see the schools through their school building and to the degree that we can prepare to speak to our school community through that lens of perhaps getting to a point where you with a building principal and, and others who are able to speak to the school itself, being ready to, to, you know, sort of present and be able to answer questions at that level, whether that's in late August or, you know, I think to the degree that you can do it before school starts, that's a confidence builder to see at that school level how it's working out. So you have a mountain. I know you're trying to climb it. Thank you.
Hey, everybody in the community knows I love communication. So, so other opportunities to enhance that are, are certainly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Maura?
So I, I don't want to hold this up at all, except to, to say one more time, thank you to everyone who has made this, made this presentation possible. I know how many folks are waiting to talk and I'm going to try and, and ask some questions that, that I was also curious about, that I, that I have seen in the questions that were written in the Q and A, just happens that we coincide. So that's the only reason that I'm going to, going to reiterate those. Could, could you, or is this a question for a future discussion? Talk a little about what it would be like with a special schedule in the A A B B flex B B schedule. So I don't, I don't know if Ms. Ellis might want to take us through what that would be like at the elementary level?
Sure. So at the elementary level, it would be the same kind of rotation that occurs now, where it's a five-day rotation of different specials. One of the things we recognized when we started to dig into what a student's experience would look like, it's very easy to look at this from a building management standpoint and then you flip it and you run through it through the lens of a student. And it became clear that with that schedule, some students will have some specials remotely, exclusively. And we recognize that and don't like it. To create a different kind of rotation was going to be extremely challenging. So what we plan at this time is to start with that schedule, see how it goes. And I don't know if it's six, eight, 10 weeks in, we'll look at it and see if it's time to make some shifts so that students who might've had art remotely now will have art in person.
So kids who are, will be having, say, one remote gym period and one in, in class, for example, or it, it would, there would be some flexibility there, particularly with those things that aren't really lending themselves to remote as well.
Yeah, I, I do also want to say, our new director of P E Health and Athletics, John Guanamano, has some really wonderful ideas about how to improve P E remotely. And we had a wonderful meeting. He's got some great plans. So I think you're going to see that looking very differently in the coming year.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, next, next. So Chris, excuse me, Dr. Harrison, you spoke a little about moving toward a one-to-one so technology situation in, and I assume that means that we need to have enough for a cohort in school at any given time. Is that, is that a reasonable way of, of thinking about the?
I would say that's half of it. Yeah, we need to have enough for every, for any child that'll be in school at a given time, but we need to be able to assure that we have enough devices for children at home. We loaned out hundreds of devices in the spring and we're still trying to get some of them back. But we are, you know, when we're looking at where we are, we need to be able to outfit them in the school. We need to make sure each of our teachers have technology that's being offered by the school district to support their, their instruction. And so we realistically, you know, when we look at, we have replacement cycles and models that we track every device in the district from year to year and everything's on a replacement schedule. We're literally going to take and realign budget monies that we have and just shift those priorities and timelines around to be able to purchase these technologies. So if push came to shove, we could put one device in every student's hands and whether that's for in-school or at-home learning.
Thank you. And that, that also applies to needs the teachers may have if they, they are for any reason.
You know, we're, yeah, we, we talk about Chromebooks because it's really become in many ways the device of choice in schools because of the cost point and the collaboration associated with Google Classroom and the Google Apps. But frankly, if we had the funding, I'd much rather give teachers a higher power, more computer of a device, a laptop, but the, the price point's just too high and looking at a Chromebook that's going to range from $250 to $300 to a laptop that's $700. So there's, that's going to be, there's going to be limitations in financing something like that. But so our priority is common device and utilizing a, a new Chromebook across the board where we can.
And whether or not teachers are in the classroom or if for some reason they are teaching from home as well, there is still a need to ensure that their technology is at the level where they can serve the students in both places or in a single place.
100%, yeah, 100%. We have an obligation to make sure that our, our students and teachers have access. So when I referenced, you know, one of our guiding principles early on, equity and access there, that speaks to, to students and that speaks to, to our faculty and staff. So at minimum, teachers will have access to a Chromebook just as our students will. And if someone has an unreliable internet connection, you know, we have provided jetpacks to staff that were moving, that they, you know, they live in a condo or in a, in a, in a big stone house and they don't get good Wi-Fi in their house. Students that didn't have anything, students that didn't have a device in their house, they didn't have internet service in their house. We gave students and some staff members devices, we gave or loaned Wi-Fi jetpacks to those same students where needed to make sure that everybody had internet access.
So how, how far, it sounds like we're pretty far away from having enough technology for the need at this point. I, I am, I'm trying to connect what I know about our current, what we currently have with, with where we need to get to for the fall.
Yeah.
For a future, a future meeting or please feel free to tell me.
The number at this point, you know, we, we have, we were certainly on, on the track to be able to do it and look, to look at the number of devices, but I, I'm trying to think, I can't give you a number off the top of my head as to how many devices we would need to complete that right now.
I'm glad to hold that question for now. Thank you. So the, the last, or I guess the next question is also maybe on the, as far as the schedule and what we're anticipating for future updates. You know, I, I know that speaking to specific groups of students in more detail is going to be difficult right now and you've given us where we are currently. But as, as Ms. Proper referenced, meeting, or excuse me, Mr. Hannah referenced just before me, families are going to want to know what, a few more details as we get closer, I think, to the school year of, of what their children's days will look like and what they are going to prepare those kids for. So what is the, remind us because we may have something in a prior presentation that says this is what the timeline is. What do the next dates look like?
The objective, I think I stated earlier, the objective was by mid, mid, I almost said October, mid-August, that we will provide all those specific details. But I, with all the nuance of a child's day. But realistically, when you, when I publish the district's comprehensive plan on Friday, there will be hyperlinks embedded within that document that will take you to model schedules for a school. So in there, where the challenge is going to be, you're not going to know what your child's individual schedule look like, but you'll be able to get a sense of what their day will look like. Individual schedules or class-level schedule at the elementary school should be able to follow in a couple of weeks. But the, a model that will be implemented at each of the schools will be linked from the plan that'll be released on Friday.
Well, we should, if anyone is ready to jump into that plan, should sort of look at that with a grain of salt that there could be some additional interpretation coming in that, in the next few weeks.
I think from a scheduling.
Jump into it we can.
I think from a perspective, it'll be pretty sound.
Okay.
As a model, but for an individual student, like, so for example, if you look at an elementary school, you gotta think there's, you know, 25 sections in a, in a school, let's say, right? 25 classes. Well, we're not going to put 25 different schedules in a model that's going to State Education Department and Department of Health. We're going to pick like a first grade model and damage and map out how a student's week will, will function, the experiences they're going to have, the classes they're going to have. And the, and middle school, high school, it'll look like a schedule-based period by period of what it will look like. What you will get in a couple of weeks, once the principals are able to complete that work, is what your child's day will look like for that period by period.
Will parents of children with I E Ps also be contacted by the Department of P P S or will there be a, a specific meeting for them in the same time period since we know that the models that may work for gen ed are not necessarily going to work in this situation?
There will be, so I, I don't want to speak as broad of a brush with students with I E Ps. But yes, there, there will be connections between P P S and, and the families. In, in particular, when we're looking at the, that cohort, seeing the students that may be included in that cohort that would attend school four days a week, students that are in, in full-time special classes is that first group. There's going to be absolute targeted communication that will go to those families and organization to help them prepare for school. When we're looking at students that have, are in collaborative environments like an I C T class, in those particular cases, we're actually, all students will receive, I would say for all students I E Ps, they're going to receive all their related services that are going, that are provided for within their I E Ps without question. In addition, we're actually going to arrange, we've actually created some other structures that we're devising at the elementary level where we're going to have additional touchpoints with students and a resource teacher within their, their school day, personal touchpoints, check-ins to make sure that they're doing well, if where they have need other support. So where possible, we're going to add additional layers there. But I, but generally speaking, if this, if a child is in an I C T class, it's in their I E P, they will continue to receive the services that are outlined and it will be supported in both in-person and distance line.
Thank you. Thank you for that detail. My, my final question is, is really for, for those families, and this is really a question, a question for the administration and the way you're thinking about this and also for all the families who are patiently waiting on the line and who have been listening to all of this. How the district is going, I mean, the, the district essentially has to observe or ask families to observe the same quarantine on those that are going to states that are now considered, and forgive me if I say this awkwardly, by New York State to require a quarantine upon return. So I know it's a, it's a, I mean, certainly we, we're talking about masks as something which is absolutely necessary to ensure that our kids can be in school. And I'm wondering about the current thinking about. So families moving and taking trips and things like that as this is, I mean, it's certainly a very strange sort of time to be looking at coming back to school and looking at summer holiday, but can you speak a little bit about the way that the district is, is going to be handling this? Because frankly, we need the cooperation of, of families in order for this to, in, in order for this start of school to work.
Yeah, so we're going to have to clearly communicate what the requirements, requirements and expectations are. And we're going to, certainly, I'm going to request of our families to be compliant with the, and, and not travel outside of the tri-state area, right? We, we think in New York, New Jersey and Connecticut are all linked in how they're making their decisions as long as they can. So my, my recommendation, request to the community would be realistically at this point, don't travel outside of these scenarios. I, I personally know of somebody that planned a trip for very necessary reason and then all of a sudden, this, just literally yesterday, the state was added to the quarantine list that they're going to. So, you know, it's going to evolve. So if you don't have to travel, I wouldn't travel. Not only are we going to need your cooperation, but we're going to need your transparency in communicating what those travels have been. You know, we're going to ask you in that survey on a daily basis, have you been to any of the states that are listed on the quarantine lists? Any of the countries that are on the quarantine list? And I got to tell you folks, we need your help. Tell us the truth. If you've been there, let's deal with the consequences of it. Let's deal with the quarantine. We will support you, but don't, don't, please put us in any kind of risky situation where you've been somewhere and then all of a sudden we have a, a challenging exposure to deal with. We need your support. We need your transparency. Again, as I said before, all this stuff stinks. I wish we could go on summer vacation. I wish I was sitting on a beach somewhere right now, rather than spending all the time focused on, on this information that's just literally not pleasing. But, but it's our reality. So if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Don't go to places we're not supposed to be. And if you would go somewhere and all of a sudden they go on the list and you went somewhere and it is already on the list, you got to tell us, you got to make sure you quarantine. And it is, you know, all the social distancing stuff, like folks, let's make sure we're doing it now. Let's, let's, you know, driving through town on a daily basis, I see kids out, I see kids hanging together, you know, parents put masks on your kids. Let's, they need to be outside, they need to exercise, they need to socialize, but please put a mask on your kid. We got to do it for, for their own safety and for ours.
Thank you. And I, I don't know if this is a question that can be answered now, but if a family has to quarantine because they're in this situation, would they be permitted to do temporary remote learning at that time? Or is that also something which is going to be dictated by?
No, that would be, that would be.
Our pay grade.
That'd be a medical situation that I believe would be addressed through, you know, distance learning plan as if a child was sick.
Thank you for clarifying. I, and I appreciate, I appreciate all the responses. I'm, I'm done.
Yeah. And if I could just say to circle back so I don't leave an extra open question for myself, we need approximately 500 devices. we need approximately 500 devices to round out our complete one-to-one for students and staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Erin?
Hi, thank you. I do have a few questions, so I'll try to talk quicker than I normally do. First off, I want to just, I want to thank the administration, the teachers, the community, like, everybody is involved in this. And the fact that we had over 500 community members, including teachers and staff on the call as well, just shows that we're committed to this process. And Chris, Carol, Mary, like you guys are doing a Herculean effort and it's, you know, not a glorious process. And there's no winning, right? I think people, there's just, there's no, there's no right, wrong. Like this is all, you know, we've never done this before. I don't, I wasn't around for the last pandemic. So, um, and I don't think we can research it. But, so I do appreciate it and it's a huge effort. And it's, hasn't gone unnoticed, I think, by anyone, the board or the community. I will back off of what Chris said, I'm sorry. We'll piggyback off of what Chris said. I, I think, you know, we talk about how our community wants to volunteer and to help. It, it can start with getting a child used to wearing a mask now because they're not going to show up on nine, eight and suddenly wear a mask if they haven't before. And I'm on a soapbox about this, but just really think about, it's not just about your family. It's about the cohort, it's about the teachers, they're going to be around other cohorts, their families, their kids, kids then in other districts. It's just a spiraling effect. So as I know Beth had asked about access to information about PE and equipment and having access to information about it, it's just, it's really, really important. Because no one, if a child is not wearing a mask now, they will not suddenly wear one on nine, eight. And I think it's an unfair expectation to put a teacher to spend their day telling a child to put their mask back on their face because that will lead to poor in, in-person instruction. So that's my soapbox. Thank you. And then with that being said, um, and I do think like we have to protect the teachers, right? Like they're the crux of all of this. Like you really have to remember, like, in order for this to work, they have to be in the classroom and they have to be healthy. So it's a domino effect. So just everyone, everyone could keep that in mind. Okay, the next thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, so, you know, they're, they're, they're essential workers and that's, you know, we're relying on them. So with that being said, if someone were to test positive, whether it's a teacher or a student, did we, did we gather metrics, and I apologize if I missed that, as to what that would be? That would be to the closing of a cohort, the closing of the school and how that would look? Because I don't know that New York State gave very specific guidance about it.
Now, there's, there's standard metrics across, for our particular region, but they have identified particular metrics that would close a school. So the governor presented, when he talked about reopening and going back, I want to say it was two and a half weeks ago. There was, he had particular metrics for a region to be able to reopen for, for education. And it had to stay within a certain level for schools to be open. But that wouldn't necessarily affect individual school districts. That, that would be based upon the, the level of contagion in a particular school as defined and guided by the department of health.
Okay, so is that, because I've read different, and obviously I live a parallel life, but I've read things with maybe like if 15% of a cohort would become positive, potentially that cohort would have to quarantine. If it was 15% of the school, the school might actually have to close. And I didn't know if that's a standard or if that's really left up to the districts to identify what that metric will be within the school.
That's a part of the. I'm sorry. That's going to be generated with the department of health.
Okay. So yeah, and I think the state guidance, which is a little confusing. It was if it's, if you're below a 9% positive test case rate next week, but 5% in the, in, in September. And it, I read it 18 times and didn't understand it.
Yeah, well, that's consistent with what the governor said, but department of health is trying to, to weed through that to make it something that's more practical and that we're not sitting there having to do calculus to figure whether we should be open or not.
They're running at 1% now.
To be a common person.
For context, um, but of course, the more, just get tested randomly, the lower that percentage is. Anyway, um. So, okay, my other question is, we're talking live streaming, but it's, I don't think it's really live streaming, right? Camera in the classroom that focus on the smartboard in a particular area of instruction as opposed to the teacher? Or is it live streaming, streaming and there are just multiple ways that that can occur within the classroom? Can you clarify that as it relates to elementary, middle and high school, just that terminology? Just understand it better. Because I feel like I've heard different things. We use the term streaming, it's not live streaming the class, right? Is that what I heard?
There's live, the live broadcast from the classroom, let's say that. But we're not live streaming like there, we don't have cameras all around the classroom where you're going to have, there's going to be from a central point of instruction in the classroom intent would not to be have children captured in the video. So it would be a place from which the teacher could deliver instruction that could be viewed from home.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry, I'm reading my notes. Before-school and after-school clubs or music taking place within the school day? I'm assuming most of that, because it's a group activity, would not take place?
Well, I'm personally going to teach flute and play flute, wearing a mask.
Oh, that's, that's unique. Way to pivot, Dr. Howard, way to pivot.
So Ms. Alice is actually working with our music chairperson, Deb McCumber, to come up with plans to be able to address those particular needs related to our music program. We certainly value our arts program. We have an incredible group of student artists, budding artists and musicians and amazing staff. We want to continue to support that. So there's particular guidance as it relates to them, like music court classes where there's performance music and PE classes where there's guidance is saying 12 feet of, of distance. So we're, when access, so we're going to look to, to be able to address that where, where viable. At, at this point in time, there athletics are, are being suspended by the state, by the New York State International Association. And we are going to look to be able to run clubs and activities where possible. But like, we have to get there to see what that's going to look like. We want kids to have the experiences. We want them to explore areas of interest and, and have those passion projects. But I can't commit to what they look like. I can tell you that our teachers and our administrators are really enthused to provide those opportunities. We're just not there yet. I got to be transparent.
No, that's, I would imagine in the hierarchy, that's something lower on the model. Let's be, like, it's important, but right now you're focused on remote scheduling, getting the, and in order, makes sense. You answered my athletics question and I feel like I had one other question. Bear with me one second. Oh, so is there coordination going on with the after-school and before-school centers as well for parents who might need that care as well?
We will, yeah, we will.
Okay, that's, I'm just.
I had, I, we had to develop a plan and have a model. And once we have our schedules in place, we're going to communicate with them. Just as we are seeking to close in the past, then when we have other challenges to our school calendars, I, I certainly will reach out to them and to have them try to coordinate their, their services to, to really wrap around the school day.
Okay, thank you. And then this is my last question. I promise I could go on for two hours. How are we assessing where kids are when they return to school just after having such a challenging spring semester? What thought on how we're assessing them, especially in a hybrid environment? And we won't really be back to that third peak of school, it seems like, with more consistency. So what are the thoughts on that? And maybe that hasn't been thought of yet either, as you're putting the plan together, so, but just to throw it out there.
So that has absolutely been thought of. And prior, prior to the end of the school year, our instructional coaches and department chairs held meetings that were vertical alignment meetings. So for example, a third grade group would meet with a fourth grade group to say, here's how kids, here's how we usually send kids to you with the concepts and skills they have. This is where we anticipate they will be this year. And as well, we looked at all of our beginning of year assessments and made modifications to them to make them a little shorter and so that we can get some quick ideas of where kids are at the beginning of the year. I also though, again, want to stress that while we might assess quickly in other years, we know kids need time to feel comfortable being back in school. And to provide, to be assessing their learning too early is not going to give us accurate information. We want to be sure they're comfortable, they have learned all the routines, so we're going to take care of all of that. And then we'll use the tools that we've developed and we'll continue to develop to, to see where, see where they are.
Thanks, Barry. I should have known you were on this already. I mean, you've been here seven months now, like, really?
Yeah, seven.
So, all right, those are my questions. Thank you both for answering.
Thank you.
Appreciate it and.
Thank you.
I take too much time. Thanks.
I just want to thank you for the thorough and thoughtful job you have done putting all this together. I have no questions and a million questions. But do you have a timeline for when the DOH is going to put out their guidelines for sick children for quarantining if someone is to get COVID?
They told us that on Monday that they hope to have it for us next week. And if possible, they would say they would like to give it to us before we submit our plans on Friday. So I'm trying to be realist. We're, I'm going to say we're almost at Thursday already.
Almost Thursday.
We're almost Thursday already. So I, I don't know that it'll arrive, but they said, I, I expect we'll get it next week.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. At, at this point, I think the trustees have had a chance to ask questions. What I'll suggest is we'll now go to the community comment portion. And then to the extent the trustees have any limited follow-up questions after that, we can take that up. So I'm going to now move on to community comments. When I call, call you, you'll be recognized to speak. If your question's already been answered and you just want to say that, that's great. If you do have a question or comment, please keep them as brief as possible and no more than three minutes. There's several people who would like to speak and we'd like to try to accommodate as many people as possible during the comment period. So with that, Tara Steinberg, five Hugh Hill Lane. Jane, if you could recognize her, please.
My question has already been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. With, with that, next contestant on The Price is Right, Eric Ollie, 42 Matheson Park North.
I do not believe he's still in the chat.
Eric, did you have a, a comment or a question?
Yeah, he's not here any longer.
Okay, thanks, Jay. So next we have Josh Deitch, six Mohican Lane.
Also not in the.
Thanks, Eric. That's a little hard to toggle between the two and see who's still here. So next we have Eric Gorman, 26 Hudson Avenue.
Also not on the call.
Okay, I'm, I've now officially struck out. That's 0 for 3. Janet Krasminski, 14 Barney Park.
Hi, I'm here.
Great, go ahead.
Okay, so Maura had, had partially answered my question just about what the day looked like with specials, et cetera. But I'm also curious is, will the day still consist of a nine-period time of day for both at-home learning and in-school? And I'm speaking obviously high school, middle school. I'm, you know, so.
Yes, the middle school and high school will be following the regular nine-period day.
Okay, and then I'm also very anxious to hear what the athletic director has for the new gym program, for sure.
We all are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You, next we have Larry O'Grodnick, 15 South Dutcher Street.
Not presently on the call.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Joshua Levin, 26 Park Avenue.
Not on the call.
Okay, next we have RJ Ho Thai, 140 North Broadway.
Yes, hi. I think the, the question was partially answered before, but I was just wondering what was going to happen with after-school and before-school programs with the middle school.
Yeah. At, at this point in time, we don't, our focus is on our responsibilities during the school day. But as the situation permits, we'll look to be able to provide those experiences, whether they, they're able to be facilitated remotely in some cases or in-person. You know, the idea here and the challenge for any ass, idea of athletics and clubs and participation is that we want to have all the kids participate. So there's the challenge, knowing that we're only going to have 50% of our students in attendance at any given time. But once, with that sort of the kind of our next hurdles of scheduling and logistics, once we, we get all the actual school day scheduled details worked out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you. Next we have Millie Geldwardt, 60 Ridgeway Drive.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for your thoughtful presentation. I know in the New York City schools, teachers are allowed to apply for medical leave and if approved, allowed to teach remotely. Is this the case for Irvington teachers? And if it's a yes, I have a follow-up question.
So, yes, it is. It would be, you know, it would essentially be an ADA workplace accommodation that one would be applying for. So as you can imagine, as with any school district, we would have, it's likely that we'll have some staff members that would require some form of accommodation.
Okay, so if it's, if that is the case, I'm not sure how many teachers are, will be approved or are, will be applying. Could the students have two teachers, an in-person teacher and a remote learning teacher? The teachers could collaborate and therefore the remote learning would be more direct, more engaging. I guess I'm having a hard time picturing what the remote learning will look like for a kindergartner if they are just going to be watching a live stream of their teacher teaching without them being engaged directly.
No.
So that seems almost similar to what asynchronous teaching would look like.
I, I think you pose a really, really smart question. I think it's going to, my response is going to be, you know, really situational. It's going to be tend, depend on the particular teacher's assignment, the grade level that they teach. And it could look and feel different at a high school environment than at, at a kindergarten in, space. Know that our approach will look different, that we certainly have an obligation to support our staff. And I'm personally, passionately dedicated to that. However, there may have to be adjustments that have to be made to teacher responsibilities based upon some of the particular assignments and what the, the needs are.
Okay, um, I guess once you see the numbers, do you think it would be a possibility for them to have two teachers?
No, I don't know from a budgetary standpoint whether we could support something like that. But the reality, I think I'm getting at is that rather than it, if that, if a particular teacher in kindergarten needed to take, to have such an accommodation, that teacher may not be assigned to teach the kindergarten class and may instead have a different assignment.
Okay, okay, sorry, not, not to harbor on it. But, um, I guess I'm still a little confused how, when my child's doing remote learning and is watching the teacher teaching live, how that, but they're not really engaging with the children who are at home because they're engaging obviously with the children sitting right in front of them. but they're not really engaging with the children who are at home, because they're engaging, obviously, with the children sitting right in front of them, how that's different from them just watching a video that the teacher uploads of them teaching that lesson?
So I don't, I'm sorry, I feel like we're doing a dance here and it's, you know, the fault of this, but I guess maybe to cut to the chase, like, at this time, I don't foresee a kindergarten teacher not being here. If it was to surface, I would be in a position where my recommendation would be for that teacher to potentially not teach kindergarten. So our kindergarten students would not be missing out on that live interaction with a teacher. We would then instead put another teacher in that child, in that teacher's place, so a kindergarten child had a live teacher in their classroom with them.
No, no, no. I think you're missing my question. Sorry. Um, I'm talking about when my child is home, let's say, on Thursday and Friday, and is doing remote learning. And you said that part of the remote learning is they would be watching the teacher teaching the Monday, the students that are in the classroom, right? They'd be watching that stream, that live stream.
Sorry, Ms. Geldwirt, I'll phrase the question, but you've exhausted your time and
Sorry.
for everyone, this isn't an opportunity for everyone to get a Q and A and a back and forth, because
Sure, no problem.
we'd be here all evening. Dr. Harrison, I think the question is just, if you're sitting at home watching a live stream, how is that if at all different than if there was just gonna be a video of that that a child could watch at a later date? So I think that was the question that was being asked.
Yes, thank you.
Mary, you wanna help out here?
Sure. Um, so I would, I would say that all of our teachers are highly skilled in teaching the ages that they work with, and a kindergarten teacher will recognize the challenges and the expectations for a kindergartner in terms of live streaming are going to be very different than the expectations for a fifth grader or a 10th grader. So I don't want to give the impression that because live streaming is a tool that is available for our teachers, that it will be used the same across the board.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Kerner. If you're still here, if you could provide your address, please, and then comment or question. Again, everyone, please try to limit it to three minutes or less and be succinct as possible.
Hi, yes, I'm here. My address is 30 North Brooklyn. I just wanted to follow up on that previous question. It's also regarding kindergarten. I'm just really, I know you guys have heard this many times. I'm just really confused as to how a kindergartner with two full-time working parents can sit in front of a screen and learn. I don't understand how that's possible. Or how to work the computer. It just, it just seems very challenging for kindergarten.
We recognize that it is extremely challenging, and our teachers will be working to do the best possible job they can with kids at home. And again, the idea of streaming is, is going to be utilized in an age-appropriate way, and the expectations for a kindergartner won't look the same as with another grade level.
Okay, and are there any accommodations being made for even, like, outside-of-school learning? Again, with two working parents who cannot sit and help a five-year-old even navigate a computer that they don't know how to use. I mean, my son can't sit for, he has trouble sitting for 30 minutes on his Zoom classes right now by himself, and we're both gonna be expected to go back to work.
I, I understand, and I know that it's an incredibly challenging situation. I can assure you that our teachers are going to do the very, very best they can to design instruction that will work for your child.
Is there any support for parents being able to find other members in the community to support that learning that's online? Sort of forming pods or any talk of getting smaller groups of children together on off days and having a tutor or something to support that for younger students?
Sarah, I would say that it's certainly something difficult, and I truly empathize with you, your family, and everyone else that's in a similar position. However, I would say that the district won't be involved in organizing or helping to coordinate any kinds of pods or other similar type groupings. You know, I certainly, as I said, empathize with you, but I also recognize that there's lots of challenges that surface in where the school's reach is in these areas. We certainly don't want to be in the predicament that we're currently all facing. But I also have tremendous concern about the economic divide in these scenarios and how it affects our students, because we have students that will not have access to those opportunities as well.
I completely agree.
So I really struggle with this from a professional ethics standpoint, that we cannot further divide our community. We have a lot of work to do on the equity front and work that I've talked about, that we had meeting a couple of weeks back about in our community. And that has to continue to be a focus that is woven through all of this work with reopening, and my commitment to that work isn't gonna die because of these challenges. I, unfortunately, I don't have a resource to extend to you and other similar families at this point in time. My hope is that, once we settle into the school year, that our teachers doing that level of work and the commitment they have will help to make the situation easier for you to navigate than you foresee right at this moment. I hope there will be an opportunity for some gatherings, maybe as Mr. Hannah had suggested earlier in the meeting, with school-level conversations, and I'm sure that Dr. Cantor and Ms. Greenspan will be able to provide some thinking and support to be able to help families.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank Richardi, 89 Stevens Drive.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Well, first of all, thank you all. You've done a tremendous job, I feel, with your quite insurmountable challenge by my humble estimation. Um, my concern is, is, Mr. Graber actually raised my concern, is how will it be that I can ensure, because I, I will tell you, my wife and I have both been working while everyone was quarantining before there were PPE, and I can assure you that people don't always do what you think they will do. They will not be honest. But this is firsthand experience, and I don't mean to be gloom and doom. I really don't want to be that guy. But, you know, I hear a lot of back and forth, but I'll be quick and just say that I'm thankful to all of you. I, I do not envy your challenge. And that I hope you look carefully and consider the weaknesses when it comes to exposure, and that I do trust you will do the best that could be done when it comes to teaching. I mean, let's face it, there are limitations even within the plan that you have. I mean, because kids are kids and people are people, and that's all, and thank you very much all, and it's really late, and good night.
Thank you. Uh, my understanding is that I called on Erin Gorman previously, and we didn't think that she was here. So if you are here still, I'll recognize you for your comment or question.
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect.
I just have some concerns about the quality of the in-person instruction if the teacher is also responsible for instructing the students at home remotely. And I think someone, somebody touched on this before about having two teachers per class. I know that's very expensive and not realistic, but was there any thought in maybe grouping the children at home for remote learning in larger cohorts when they're at home? And maybe having a TA supervise their learning or a part-time teacher supervise their learning? Because I'm just worried that, you know, the students, when they're in school, they have two days to get the maximum impact from their teacher and their in-person experience. And I just feel the teacher has to worry about engaging the students at home also at the same time, that that's going to take away something from the students in the classroom.
Thank you. Dr. Harrison, do you want to touch on that briefly?
You know, I would say, you know, in the ideal situation, we'd have our kids in school. In the ideal situation, we would have as many staff members as possible to support us in a distance learning model or hybrid approach. Really, it's, it's not financially viable for us to think that we could employ more people. If we go back and look through our budget process, we made cuts in anticipation of, you know, a difficult financial year. We're still not seeing the stimulus that's needed here. We're being told to plan for cuts throughout the course of this school year. So we don't have the money within our budget today to hire additional people, and we know that we are being advised to expect reductions in funding throughout the course of the school year. So unfortunately, I don't have good news to offer on that front, that we'll not be able to add additional staff to supplement the level of instruction or the support that our children will receive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'm serving back, I believe, I recognized Larry O'Grodnick before. I'm told that you may still be with us, so if that's the case, we'll recognize you now for your comment.
Hi, yeah, thanks for coming back to me. Um, yeah, so thanks, everyone, again, for all the hard work and all the planning. Like, it's kind of been mentioned, but I'm still concerned there's not a plan for full-remote learning, not just for people that are at higher risk, but like has been mentioned, it seems inevitable that some kids or some families are going to have to be fully remote at some point, either due to travel they had, or they've been in contact with someone in their family that may be, you know, at risk, or that they've had a fever, and, you know, when they filed that survey and they had to stay home for two weeks, so what are they gonna do if there's no plan for full-time learning? You know, I understand that that is going to be allowed for full-time learning, but again, having a plan for it seems not great. Relatively, I understand we're leaning a lot on county and state guidelines for more guidance, you know, in terms of what happens when someone gets sick. But I'd still love to hear, you know, more concrete plans for things that seem common, like they're gonna happen. Like, someone is going to get sick, or someone is gonna have someone they're in touch with that is symptomatic, and, you know, what happens there? For me personally, like, waiting for some state guideline that, like, 20% of the kids in the school are sick and symptomatic, and the whole school shuts down feels way past my comfort level. I'd like to hear about, like, what kind of communication's gonna happen for parents if someone in their cohort or one of the teachers in the cohort is sick. And I guess finally, I'm disappointed to hear there's not temperature checks. It seems like a pretty easy thing to do. There's a lot of quick, no-contact methods for doing it, and it just, I don't know, feels like a easy thing to do to keep everyone safe, at least at the classroom level. So I'm disappointed to hear that's not a part of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just respond quickly that, that we're not sitting and waiting for some huge number from, from DOH and some significant formula to be able to determine what will need to happen. If we have someone that tests positive within a particular cohort, we will have the contact tracing in place, communication with the Department of Health, and based upon their guidance, we'll determine who needs to be notified, who needs to be quarantined, whether a particular class of students and the teacher need to stay home until it's cleared up, whether that's two weeks or a test, you know, test come back negative. That will be guided by Department of Health, and those communications will happen in a rapid timeline. Much like you get the calls from me when we get a snowstorm, you're gonna get calls from us, whether your principal or system principal, that will be identifying the risk that may be present and how we're proceeding. So we're not sitting and necessarily waiting. Those percentages would speak to, if you're having 9%, that would be within a school community, but it's not 9% that are currently positive, that are attending school. Anyone that's, that is positive will not be permitted in school, and through contact tracing will identify who else needs to be quarantined for the respective period of time. Simply stated, with respect to the idea of temperature checks on its face, it may certainly seem easy, but I think of staff being available to do it. I think of having to do it for hundreds of kids as they arrive in the morning at school, and how we control that and not being able to maintain the necessary social distance. Finally, the methodology that I outlined in my presentation is actually recommended by the Department of Health and the State Education Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Snyder, 61 Havermeyer Road.
I think I'm on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your work so far. You know, we're definitely looking forward to the in-person days, provided it's safe for everyone involved to attend. My theme is somewhat similar to our previous questions, in that we have kindergarten first-grade students. And based on our experience in the spring, remote learning on screens, it seems a little bit like box checking, and it's unlikely to be effective or a good use of anyone's time. And if we do find that to be the case, will there be an alternate curriculum that we can pursue so that the students can stay enrolled and not be true, and if they're not showing up for video sessions on their distance learning days?
Mary?
We will not be offering separate curriculum other than what is being offered through the combination of onsite for two days and remote for three days. There is an option that is available to all parents through the guidances part of New York State regarding homeschooling, at which point parents would take full responsibility for the education of the children.
What is the option if you're attending the two days, but the remote instruction is not effective? Can you?
I'm sorry, I can't believe you said it again.
If you're attending the two in-person days, but the remote instruction is not effective for various reasons?
If you're finding that the remote instruction is not effective, the first step would be to reach out to the teacher and talk with them about the challenges that you're having. And like with any other concern that you would have in a school setting, you would start with the teacher. And if you're not able to resolve it at that level, to move to the building leadership. And if you find yourself unable to resolve it at that level, to reach out either to me or to Dr. Harrison.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Fonseca, 25 Eiler Lane.
And I don't think she's on anymore.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm trying to toggle. It's a little different.
Yeah, I was looking as well.
Okay. Uh, next, we have Juliette Provenzana Gober, 45 Half Moon Lane.
Hi.
Hello. Go ahead, please.
Hi. Um, my question has to do with the survey in the morning that you had discussed. Will that be asking questions specifically about the student who's coming into school and what risks they may, that may highlight that they have been exposed to COVID? Or will it also look into the parents or any other household people who would better evaluate the risk for COVID than the child itself? Because I know, as we know, the children don't necessarily show all the symptoms often, the adults. So I was just curious specifically about the survey, and you may not have the answer, but that's my question.
No problem. We don't have all the specific questions identified, but they would speak specifically to whether a child is symptomatic, whether they have been in contact with somebody that may be symptomatic or is known to have COVID. And it will also speak to, you know, travel, as I referenced earlier. So it will make that connection with family members. I think you do make a really good point with respect to, you know, the family connections and who may likely be displaying symptoms and who may not. So you raise a good question.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, it's just because I know a lot of people are coming in and, you know, have family visiting and such, so that would just be something that I would obviously hope is taken into consideration. So thank you very much. Take care, and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding is that Stephanie Fonseca is still with us, so she may be sent on just to Stephanie. So Jay, if you could find her and promote her, that'd be great.
It should say Stephanie Fonseca, Brian. That's what it said earlier.
Yeah, I'm trying to toggle too much. I was told that she was may still here, but.
She just said she's still here. Oh, there she is. Okay.
On now.
Go ahead.
Stephanie? She's in and not muted. So I think there's a technical issue on there and Brian.
Okay, so we'll skip past next. Not sure if you're still with us, but I know I saw Robin McCray next up in the queue. So Robin, if you're still here, you're up. I just had 45 Whitetail Road.
Can you repeat the name again? I apologize.
Yes, Jay, Robin McCray, M-C-R-A-E.
I'm not seeing her on the call at the moment.
Okay, she may have dropped off. Next, we have Sophie Jeff, 18 Richmond Hill.
Also not on the call.
Okay.
Can you, Jay, can you remove? You still have that one deadline with Stephanie. Can you remove her, please?
Okay, next, we have Jenica Viera, 25 Hudson Avenue.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead, please.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for the very, very thoughtful and thorough presentation. And thank you all very much for your time. I am a parent of a rising eighth grader, and from a parent perspective, it sounds like you have it all together. And I applaud you for it. I'm also, full disclosure, I'm a teacher in a neighboring district. And I'm wondering if there's any way that you might consider having your teachers work remotely on Wednesday? As all the parents are trying to pivot and find childcare for their children, also in this unique position that they're essential workers. And now their students, their children are working from home and in a hybrid model, too. I'm just wondering if it would help minimize the stress that your teachers are feeling from home on Wednesdays rather than be in the building. That would also be a great time to have a deep clean in the building without anybody in there.
Great. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the consideration and concern for our staff. One of the things that we've been looking at from a really a design perspective is the need to be able to provide that opportunity for collaboration. And we want to be able to utilize in-district resources to do so. And we can facilitate lots of meetings and teachers can collaborate utilizing strategies that they'd be employing in their classroom settings and working with children. So right now, the intent is to have them work here onsite, but know that your thoughts and recommendations aren't lost on me. But we certainly want to support our teachers in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, I think I've just found Robin and McCray. And Robin, you should now be allowed to talk.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Great, thanks. Thanks, everyone. I won't belabor that, but yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Also, just a really quick comment to Sarah or any other parents on this call. I know that when our community comes together, we do great things. And I know there's a lot of high school students who are available for helping and tutoring and helping with technology. So reach out, and I'm sure you will find a great response from our community. Okay, and then as for my question, I was just wondering if you guys had considered any other software, which I also think would help with a lot of the questions and feedback that you probably received. Google Classrooms is one of the most, one of the more, sorry, antiquated programs out there, like Schoolology, Seesaw Canvas. There are so many programs out there that are more interactive and provide, that may provide more interactive and exciting opportunities for our students who are having to learn remotely or distance at the time. So I was just wondering if you guys did evaluation on that, Brian?
At this time, we have, and Robin, we have made an investment in this particular platform, and we're thinking of the capacity of our teachers. And right now, this is a platform on which many of our teachers have developed proficiency or are in the process of becoming highly proficient. We don't have the adequate resources as far as time to make such a transition. And some of the platforms that you talked about aren't cheap and would be a significant financial liability for the district that we're not prepared to endure at this point. Google is going through a significant transition this summer and rolling out layers and layers. It was like a four-page list that I was reading yesterday that Jay Stromwasser provided, the administrative team here, of all the updates that are coming out. So we anticipate that Google is going to become a more powerful tool for this. But we have to work within the confines of where we believe we can be successful. And we don't have, simply have the capacity to be able to support the rollout of a new platform at this time.
Okay, well, if there's ever an opportunity for parents to volunteer to do evaluations or trainings or any way for us to get involved, I would love to think that we would have the best opportunities for these types of softwares if there are improvements that come down the pike, understanding there are time constraints and limits. But would love to help if there's an opportunity to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Larissa Surchin, 29 Alta Vista Circle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Let's go ahead.
Hi, I just, just very quickly, because you've answered so many questions already. I know you mentioned about the IEP plans. What about for students who are on 504 plans? Have you thought through how you might continue to provide support for those students and what that might look like?
Students with 504 plans will receive all of the services and/or modifications and accommodations that are in their phones.
Okay, I mean, okay. Well, I mean, will the parents be, will we be in touch, I guess, with whether it's the guidance counselor or whoever's the appropriate person sort of at the beginning of the year to figure out what's needed in this kind of, you know, unusual model to make sure that's a successful year?
So I will touch base with Ms. Krieger on that. My, what the process that would ordinarily be in place to work with parents for how a 504 is being implemented would be the same. We're doing, all of those things will be exactly the same, but I understand school's not the same now. So I will double check with her to make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alyssa Strauss, 64 Butterwood Lane East.
Hi, I want to say thank you again, and my question was answered. Move on.
You. Next, we have Ryan Merkin, 55 Whitetail Road.
There we go. Sorry about that. I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Thanks so much. Thanks for your time. This is going overtime here. Quick question. It was mentioned, Dr. Harrison, about using outdoors as mass relief, which would make some sense to me. But then you went on to say that you thought it could be an opportunity for enhanced learning, which I'd welcome to use as much outdoor time as possible as both a, you know, safety measure, but an opportunity for additional education to connect with our environment. So I'm wondering your thoughts on that, if that was further considerations, serious consideration there?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question, I think, Ryan, that we have, we have some beautiful grounds. We have resources in the Irvington Woods, O'Hara Nature Center, that I think we need to really take advantage of. If we had the latitude and the flexibility and the funds to be able to create more outdoor learning spaces, we certainly would pursue that opportunity. But our teachers will be encouraged, to the extent safe and practicable, to take children outdoors, to engage them in their environment and seek some inspiration and opportunity for learning from those experiences.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Nielsen, 30 Woodlawn Avenue in Tarrytown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, sorry about that. So I guess another parent had actually asked a question about pods in terms of supplementing her child. And obviously, Dr. Harrison, you discouraged it and said that Irvington would not be helping out with that. But I guess my question is sort of on the opposite end, where there's going to be a lot of parents who actually know are planning on doing this. And I feel like it's creating a really huge divide with our community and socioeconomically and everything, where some students will be getting a huge advantage because of pod learning, because of the days off, and where the other students, who might have two working parents that don't have the funds to, you know, pay for this kind of instruction to supplement their child. And that we might be creating a giant divide. So I know, I guess I just, I'm curious, you guys have considered that? And what you're doing to, you know, help the people that can't pay for their children to be better?
Our commitment is to, thank you, Ashley, our commitment is to provide the very best experience for the children while they're on our watch, and to be able to try to provide enriching experiences where we can extend the school day where possible through a club and other after-school activities. But supporting the development and implementation of pods is something that we simply cannot, cannot do as a school district.
Sure, but I guess also, so, I'm sorry, I don't want to take up all your time. But I guess also, you know, so there's parents who want to, you know, include their kids in pods and stuff to supplement their learning. But if we're, if we're doing this two-day-a-week instruction through, you know, through Irvington School Districts, but then other parents are sending their kids to pods, little pods, it seems like they'll also be exposing these children to other children who may or may not be in the, you know, the A or B instruction. Do you know what I'm saying? So it might also be creating a detriment to the entire system. You know what I'm saying? So I guess I'm just asking what, what you guys are doing to, you know, prevent that.
I think the responsibility falls on families. And then if you're, and if you're looking, seeking to form a pod, you need to be considerate of all the responsibilities associated with that and the exposures that you're bringing your child towards. And that those exposures, whether they be playing for a baseball team, a soccer team, or going to a pod, or letting your kid go swimming in a public pool somewhere, you got to consider those risks for your own child and how that will present risks to our school community. I don't want to be redundant. We're not in a position where we're going to be convinced that we need to be able to support them, because we simply do not have the capacity nor the responsibility to be able to do so. I wish we could do more for every child in the school. We are doing everything we can with the resources, the staff, and the funds available to us. So my apologies that my answer isn't satisfactory, but I don't think we're going to arrive in a common place at this point.
I'd also like to clarify, the statement has been made a couple of times that instruction is happening two days a week, and that is incorrect. Instruction is happening five days a week, two days onsite and three days remotely.
Sure.
Thank you. So Stephanie Fonseca, I believe, is still here. So Jay, I found her. I'll promote her to talk. Stephanie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I wanted to firstly thank all of you for your hard work in trying to come up with a thoughtful and effective learning plan for our district. I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and thank all of the teachers who have done an amazing job and who are facing their own anxieties as they enter this new, interesting school year. Having said that, however, I do have some concerns on the elementary level that I would appreciate some clarity on. Specifically, there are four issues. I'm just going to list them, and then if you can provide clarity, that'd be great, either now or at a different point. The first is, as you know, elementary-age children require a significant amount of support and supervision. This plan puts an overwhelming financial burden on working parents, especially single parents, where they are now having to pay 50% more for childcare costs than in previous years. And though school is not a childcare provider, it has been for decades a significant factor in how parents structure their work-life balance. Has any consideration been made to support such families, especially since some of these families may not be the neediest families as identified in the past? My second concern is parents of elementary-age children will be needed to assist with the subject material that children are engaging with. And even though we are talking about K through 5, some subjects, such as math, are taught in what some would consider a challenging foreign language. You know, is there a plan to support parents with the subject material? Or could there be a frequent feedback loop between parents and teachers in how their children are doing? Number three, in the earlier part of the presentation, I believe Dr. Harrison mentioned that children could possibly be moving within the school building. And I'm curious, firstly, does this apply to the elementary experience? And is it as often as it was pre-pandemic? And lastly, I wanted to ask if the district could prioritize core learning at the elementary level of math and ELA, rather than specials like PE and music? And if not, is there an option to opt out for in-person participation in these specials? And that's my long-winded four-point question.
Thank you.
So I can address some of those, and Dr. Harrison, I'll let you take some as well. In terms of supporting parents, I think that is absolutely an area that we need to put more attention and more time in, in this coming year. I think we all recognize that that needs to happen. So thank you for that comment. In terms of prioritizing core learning and opting out of other subjects, those other subjects are not only required by New York State, and we have minute requirements in terms of offering those and being sure that students have exposure to them. But we also have an obligation to be sure that students are exposed to a wide range of ways in which to interact with themselves and with the world around them. And art, music, PE, all of those are ways that children of all ages really benefit from exposure and experience. And so as we've done in other years, certainly the majority of instructional minutes is spent in literacy and mathematics, but those other subjects will be covered as well. And opting out is not a choice.
I just want to, I guess, clarify, would those subject, those special subjects be different than pre-pandemic? As we know, research has shown that singing in small, in enclosed group could potentially increase the transmission of the virus.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm working with the special area teachers on how to do that. And we have very, very specific guidance, especially with regard to music, about how to do it in a safe manner. So absolutely, it will look very different. So absolutely, it will look very different. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Next, we have.
Dr. Harrison, did you want to address the question about childcare?
I don't remember the specific question. I was thinking about the movement. Yes, there'll be less movement in a school building at the elementary level.
Yeah.
So that is one question. I don't remember the specifics on the childcare question.
And so we'll go back and look at it later at this.
Okay.
We're going to Sherry Reichenberg, 61 Roundbend Road. Go ahead.
I mute myself. Hi. Thank you all for staying on so incredibly late. Sure, it's not how you want to be spending your evening. I have a lot of questions and concerns about the way that the, the quality of the education that elementary students can receive remotely in the days that they're streaming in. But that's, that's not really something that's solvable right here. So one of the specific questions that I had is, I'm not sure, it's, it's not clear to me how a student can remotely understand the teacher who is masked when they're teaching in the classroom. In the nursery schools, a lot of the teachers are wearing clear masks. So students can at least see their mouths move. In some other school districts I've heard of, the teachers will be mic'd behind their mask and have that connected to the camera. That's probably more costly. Is there any thought that can be given to how especially elementary students can hear or see, you know, to better understand the teacher when they're receiving the education through the computer screen?
Yeah, we plan to provide teachers, especially in the very early elementary years, with clear masks.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Janet Kovak, 62 Station Road.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, Janet.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for all your hard work on all this. I have a logistical question regarding the at-home or distance learning day specifically at Main Street School. I'm wondering, someone asked a similar question for the middle and high school, but will the at-home distance learning days, their schedule, will it mirror exactly the in-person schedule and timeline?
Yes, that is the intention, Janet.
So like fourth and fifth graders will be online from like nine to three on their own, on their at-home days?
Yeah, yeah, it'll, so I, I don't want to say fourth and fifth graders are going to have the same schedule, but they, they will be consistent that they'll be engaged in learning throughout that period of that day. So if you were to look at a, you know, a student in fourth grade and fifth grade, they're going to be having, you know, different subjects at different times or different specials on different days. But they, they will be similar.
Okay, terrific. Thanks so much again for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Very welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Noyes, 49 Mallard Rise. I'm going to say, looking at it, we have several Michelles who are signed in solely as the first name Michelle, so.
I am at Mallard Rise.
Perfect. There we go. We found you. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. So, you know, again, goes without saying, thank you. But in the interest of time, just concerned about the expectation of having the young elementary school kids remote for a full six hours of instruction with, you know, again, working parents and much, a lot of hands-on coordination needed. So no easy salt, no easy solves for that. But, you know, again, in an ideal scenario, it would be differentiated on remote learning. I also think it's very difficult to instruct a live audience as well as a remote audience at the same time for any audience, even if you're dealing with adults, let alone, you know, small children who are new to this environment. So I don't envy your task. I appreciate all the work you're putting in. These are real concerns I have dealing with, you know, first, rising first graders after the kindergarten experience.
Thank you. Ms. Ellis, was there something you wanted to say in response or? Okay. Next, we have Peter Hawkins, 120 North Broadway.
Peter?
Here, I think I found, found him all loud.
I'm here. Got me now?
Yep. Go ahead, please.
There we go. Appreciate it. All right. I didn't know it was on you myself. I have two questions, and they're kind of unrelated. So I was hoping that you could do one and then we'll do the second. Earlier, you alluded to ICT, ICT students who have related services and how their needs would be met in this model. And I was wondering if you could just elaborate on that, specifically whether or not those services would be provided both remotely and in person, or if those kids would more so be considered as kind of that group C group?
So I think in that case, we would need to look at exactly what the services are, how frequently they occur, what the child's schedule is. The services will be delivered, the specificity of whether it's done in person or remotely, I think would need to be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, I appreciate it. Yeah, I think just the, the main concern is a kid that might have, say, two or three services across the week, that all those wouldn't be packed in to the in-person days, because then it would take away from the, you know, the socializing and, and, you know, the main parts of, you know, the gen-end classroom. So it's just something I wanted to be considered. Second question was, you know, and actually, this is a hot topic kind of in the city right now, because all the students have been given the option, or families, I should say, have been given the option to go 100% remote. However, that's not the case for employees, right, for teachers? So if you wanted medical accommodation to say, to teach at home, you would have to be the person that actually has, is at risk, or does have a certain health condition to be considered. Whereas, you know, there's plenty of teachers who may have a household member or a family member that is high-risk, and they're not giving accommodation for those, those employees. So I was wondering, in the case of students, if there's a student that may not have, be in a high-risk category, but say the mother is, or, and, you know, a household member is in a high-risk category, would medical accommodation be considered for those students to remain completely remote in that case?
I think, Peter, it would be contemplated based upon whatever medical documentation was provided by the respective family.
Okay, so kind of a case-by-case basis situation?
Yeah, honestly, how we have to evaluate everything.
Oh, of course.
And then we're, we're trying to, you know, you can imagine, like, I, I don't want to be a doctor and negotiating all these things, but at the same time, we got to try to have some kind of, some equity in how we handle them. So, but we certainly would, if you have such a request, I would suggest that you reach out to your, your school principal and provide some written documentation for whatever your request is. So, you know, that would be accompanied by any necessary medical documentation.
Cool. All right. Thanks again, guys. And I appreciate all the hard work. I know it's no small feat. So, you know, good luck in the rest of the way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Rodnick, 49 Westwood Circle.
I'm still here. Could you hear me?
Yep.
Right past my bedtime, too. I just had a quick question about masks. I know, obviously, a requirement in traveling through the school, but will students, especially I'm talking about middle school, high school students, will be required to be wearing their masks while sitting in their desks, if their desks are socially distanced from their classmates?
Yes, at this time, our students will all be wearing, students and staff will all be wearing masks in, in the school building, with the exception of times when we're providing mask breaks. And I'm sorry, I'm hearing myself having very little affect. I'm just getting tired.
But that's okay. I just, just wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Philip Futternick, 60 Ridgeway Drive.
Hi, guys. Quick question. My question is about whether enough parents, or even some parents, choose to have their children opt out of in-person schooling, whether you would consider some of the children that are going to be in school to come more than two days per week? Thanks again for everything.
Thank you.
An interesting idea. I think we're going to have to wait and see what the numbers look like.
Next, we have Debbie Jacoby, 65 Station Road.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead, please.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. First question relates to how the teachers or whoever is going to evaluate students at the beginning of the year, seeing as they'll only see them twice a week. So, for example, how much has been lost because they were home, because of some are things that they would normally have to do, but have a lot more time with them? Next question relates to if teachers have to be out because they have to quarantine or they get sick, do we have subs lined up that are going to be willing to come into our school building? And third question, in terms of, because I have kids at three different schools, for high school students and things like APs and Regents, how are we going to ensure that the curriculum is being met? I know we don't even know if they're, you know, what the Regents or APs will be like, but will the kids be in front of a computer for six hours and then expected to be doing homework for another however many hours?
I think you said a lot of things there. The one thing, when we think with respect to Regents exams, AP exams, whether Regents course or an AP course, we're going to strive to meet all the curricular. I do expect that there will be some level of involvement with homework. It may not be what it is during the typical school day. But, you know, kids aren't going to be sitting in front of a computer six hours a day. They're going to have check-ins with teachers. They're going to have time where they have to go off and do independent work. There's going to be discussions similar to they would in the school day. We're going to make the best of the situation, and we're going to do our darndest to prepare our students to be successful on all of those high-stakes tests. But in doing so, we got to recognize that kids across New York State, kids across the rest of the country, or many of them are facing the same challenges. So unfortunately, it's, it's not just where we are. It's, it's the reality of the times that our kids face. I have a high schooler myself, and we have those discussions in my house. The school's doing their best, and he's doing his best. And as parents, we're going to support him where we can. We're all going to collaborate to make the best out of this.
Thank you.
Next, we have Andrea Flynn on Shaw Lane.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Two quick questions. One is in regards to standards. I'm more wondering if the standards will stay the same, even though learning is different this year? And also wondering, even though Irvington is not doing school sports, there are a number of other sports leagues that are continuing to take place that I know a number of students are planning to participate in. And I'm wondering if the school has any thoughts or recommendations on students participating in those activities?
In terms of standards, are you referring to the New York State learning standards?
Yes, yes.
Yes. The standards are, will remain the same. As most people know, the number of standards is, is quite overwhelming. And one of the activities that our teachers have been engaged in is going through the standards and identifying what are known as power standards to determine what's the absolute most important learning that needs to happen and make sure that they're focusing on those things. And I'm not able to answer your other question. Dr. Harrison, do you want to take that one? We lose him?
Looks like we may have lost him temporarily. Looks like we may have lost him temporarily. So, well, that will be taken into consideration. But next, we have Lisa Gen, who I think signed in as Mark Snyder at 61 Havemeyer Road. And I would say, at least by my count, I think I've gotten to the end of the queue. I apologize if I missed anyone. So if you're still with us and you haven't had an opportunity to, to speak, but yet you would still like to, please put your name in the Q and A, because I'm, because we do want to afford you the opportunity. If you haven't had a chance yet tonight to speak, to do so. So, but I'm, so please do that promptly. And that, Jay, if you're able to find. Gen, that'd be great.
They are able to speak.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Yes. Hi, thank you so much for your time. I just have a very quick clarification question. Students with IEPs are on the exact same schedule as their peers in the same half of the alphabet, right? They go the same number of days?
Unless the student is in a special class, in which case they go Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
So that's not an ICT class. That's a different.
In an ICT class, it would follow the same pattern, yes.
Oh, sorry. So in an ICT class, it would be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
No, for an ICT class, it would be A through L and M through Z.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if there's anyone who hasn't yet had a chance during public comment this evening to speak, please let us know. So that, we have Dela Lenz, 21 Isler. Our mind is lensed that you afforded the opportunity earlier to speak, but we will afford you an opportunity to speak again now after the presentation. But please keep your comments or questions to the three-minute limit. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. I, I knew that there was two separate question and answer times. I wasn't clear about that. Out of state quarantine, I'm sure the school is aware that there are anticipated times when we know families will be going in and out of states with siblings and college schedules. What is your plan to address these times and accommodate the high number of quarantined children during those times? I'll just run down my questions. As special education, I would like to know more information about IEPs and 504s, because although it sounds good that it, everything will be business as usual, it's really not. And there'll, there'll be other challenges that the children will have with the remote learning that weren't currently addressed in the IP or the 504s that would need to be addressed. My third question, have you considered furloughing non-direct learning staff in order to provide teachers with additional teaching support staff? Another question is, again, with the equitable education. I know my daughter is considering deferring from heading off to UVM to provide tutoring and childcare. I appreciate her considering entrepreneurial options. How will the district ensure equitable education is being provided? Also, in the high school, there's grading curves. So if there are parents that are supplementing significantly, how will that affect the grading for the children who aren't able to provide that additional support? And if we know that a significant number of families aren't providing the supplemental, supplemental education to do the basic understanding, does the school not feel obligated to at least provide that basic understanding? My next question is, will the district ensure equity of class size? In the past, general classes are usually larger than AP and honors classes. Online and hybrid models will create greater demands on teachers with larger classes. How will the district ensure equitable learning in those cases? And also, before COVID, kids got sick. How will the students differentiate, or will all students who have a cold or have a fever be required to quarantine? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want me to answer that, Dr. Harrison? Sorry.
There were a lot of questions. There were a lot of questions. I'm not sure if they're all answerable.
I think we were just collecting those, right?
Yeah, I think those are going to be points for consideration. Dela, I apologize, there were so many. Many of them were great points or questions. Some, I think, we may have answered through the course of the evening as well. But we are documenting all the questions to inform our thinking. Obviously, there's many, many things that were asked tonight. We're not going to be able to publicly respond to each and every one of them. But know that Ms. Stein is enjoying tracking all the questions and documenting them for us so we can use them to inform our thinking down the road.
Perfect. So I think we've now gotten to everyone. I apologize if I missed anyone. I'll keep, you know, so at this point, I want to thank the community for their participation this evening. And the number of attendees obviously shows the interest that the community has in how we're going to reopen our schools. And as I said at the beginning, while, you know, this is an important inflection point in the process in terms of where we're at and now having a model going forward, there's still a lot of details that will be worked out over the course of the next month. So please continue to monitor the communications from the district and future meetings for additional information on the reopening plans as they progress. So to my fellow trustees, is there anything else that anyone has at this point in time?
I will reserve time to reflect on so many very excellent questions over the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do need more to reflect, you know, I do, I would like to, you know, sort of, it came up a couple of times just to, Ken, just help, you know, over the, over the iterations as this planning goes forward. And I think you just, you know, relayed that information, Dr. Harrison. You know, just remember, there are a lot of circumstances where students may need to work remotely. So I just urge the administration to collaborate with whomever to try to figure out how to solve that issue, especially with quarantining and people getting sick and fever, et cetera. Other than that, lots to think about, and thank you again very much. And we really appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you to the community for giving us so many things to reflect on.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Of course, as we've been going so long, my secondary computer with my agenda died. So if, if someone, I think at this point, or at the, I tell everyone that our next meeting is August 11th, I believe, at 7:30. So looking forward to seeing you there. And now can we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you, everyone, and good night.
Good night.
Hey, thank you.